We'll call the regular Ridgeway Town Council meeting on August 13, 2020. Project Order.
Mr. Scrambling.
Here.
Kroger, here. Montague, yeah. Skylar.
Here.
Skogo.
Here.
Mayor from Townmacon.
Yeah.
Mayor Clark.
Here. Nice to everybody here. That brings us to additions and or deletions to the agenda.
The only thing.
Mayor, if I could just request that we add ratification or amendment of stage two fire restrictions as a standalone item and then an update on the progress of the 2025 strategic. I had not had an opportunity to make that up, so it's not in the back.
So one, one on, one off. We'll make the ratification of the stage two fire restrictions be number 16 in place. Yes, I think.
I was wondering if there is an appetite for council or the town of Ridgeway to write a letter to CDOT to either make sure that they go through with the plans to expand Billy Creek Lane System or to consider lowering the speed of Billy Creek or taking away the passing lanes in that Billy Creek Zone. There were just too many.
Couple of hotels.
And I was, I was just saying, we could, we can have, maybe that discussion wherever it would be appropriate, Mayor.
Yeah, let's take that under, take that over policy. 16 days. Take it at the beginning of that.
That's good.
Tell them you remind me when we get there. All right, that takes us to the adoption consent calendars. And if it wants to come off, we have a motion to approve.
Down low.
Second.
Once the name is seconded, there.
I'm high man.
I think we both.
Oh, it's the last.
Not only remember the role. Yeah. That brings us to public comments. Anybody in the room want to make a public comment about something that's not otherwise on the agenda? Going on, while I'm hearing none, we'll move on to public questions and presentations. The item number seven is presentation on the Telluride Foundation's Housing Assistance Program. And Demus, Telluride Foundation is on this, but it's looking so pretty, she's probably like, yeah, she is coming, Preston.
Yeah, she's supposed to be here in person, so she might just be running behind.
Out in traffic. Well, why don't we, why don't we table that one and move on with the others? It takes us to item number eight, which is the bi-annual report presentation from Ridgway Area Chamber of Commerce on activities and status. Ashley's not here, but I think the new director is going to take.
Yes.
What would you like me? Up here at the podium, you do it front and center.
Don't like pressure, Kevin. All right. Well, hello. I'm John Hill. I know a handful of you, but Ashley, as you know, resigned, so I get the pleasure of presenting this. She's worked hard on all of this, so I contributed to it, but this has been a work in progress to get this presentation together. So. Yeah. So should I just say hit the slide?
Yeah. Let's move into slide spread.
Cool. So we're just going to go through operations and the board and the deliverables, highlights, achievements, financial. We should have Jane on Zoom that can answer any questions that might come up. And then the visitor guide is a, was a huge thing for the board, the chamber to complete, and then we'll wrap it up. So on the operations, I've been on the board for, since January. I've learned a lot. I still have a lot to learn about what's been done in terms of the PSA and delineating that from chamber business, but it's getting more and more clear the more I meet with, with some of you guys and certainly Tara with Fuse and had some fun conversations, collaborations on that. But my quick background and why I'm here. I met Ash and she asked me if I was interested in joining the board and I have a, I'm really passionate about small business. I've owned a bike shop. I'm from Austin, Texas, owned a bike shop. Own an event production company. I put on events for up to 10,000 people, as little as 50 people. Owned most of those properties. So I get concerts. I get a lot of the, the event production that's going on. And having started, like my passion is helping small business and marketing. So I have literally felt the pain of owning a small business that's, you know, trying to figure out how to pay bills many times. And I've gotten lucky and gotten out of it. And sometimes I've not been so lucky, but so that's who I am and why I think I can contribute to the town. And, and just to comment again, having attended several Fuse meetings with you guys, I see like a fun collaborative opportunity. So I'm, I'm just thrilled to be a part of it and I appreciate being invited. Jane is our current treasurer. Jordan, who's here, is our, will be our secretary, wears many hats. We have recently lost a couple of board members and as I'm, as I'm looking at this objectively, I'm like, why do we have turnover? Why? And apparently this has been the case for a number of years on the chamber, on the board for the chamber. I, what I can say now is I'm already in communication with three other people that I've talked to. My goal is to get a fun board, a stable board, an intelligent board, people who, they know business, they know the community, most importantly, and work well together and, and just figure out ways to sta, I brought this up in our board meeting on Monday night. It's like, how do we stabilize and, and eliminate that turnover because that's more productive for everyone? And I don't want to be naive and say, I think I have people selected that'll, that will stay, but that's my goal. And then because we have been short on some board, board member function, we do have staff to help us. Christina's here, she does our social media and along with Ash, and I think they do a great job. Content's great, engagement, the quality of the posts, and we'll get to the PSA requirements here in a minute. But I had a call with Daniel yesterday, met him. So as we're sort of transitioning, I'm drinking through a fire hose with everything, all the relationships that, that I'm becoming new in. And, and it's, and it's working out nicely so far. So. So on the PSA, I've, I've studied it. I, I understand it. The more I meet with, with people like Tara and you guys and Fuse community. And, and I hear things. I'm, I've got a pretty good idea now of expectations and and there, and there is some overlap and we had that, what I thought was a wonderful collaborative effort with Fuse and trying to define who's doing what. And I think we're at the beginning of getting clarity on all of that so that we know, okay, we're not duplicating efforts. We're getting clear on, on a lot of the, the, the marketing tasks in particular, whether it be for creative culinary events, et cetera. So on the, the SOW, it's the scope of work for the PSA, website, social media, newsletter, marketing campaigns, visitor, visitor center, which I've, I've had the pleasure of working in there many times in the last couple of weeks and get to have a lot of fun conversations, as I'm sure you know. The partnerships, feedback survey. So, I mean, really, and I don't want to just go through and read this line by line and bore you, but the intent of the goal is to increase awareness of Ridgway through multi-channel communication to residents and visitors alike for year-round economic vitality. So working with, just a side note, getting to meet so many business owners, you know, like Marty at Greenwoods or Matt from Colorado Boy. Get to know these guys and these ladies and, and under, have an understanding of their needs and, and I, through the chamber, I feel like I'm better able to understand how we can be helpful, which in turn is helpful for the community. It's, we generate revenue for these businesses. We bring people in and it's good for everyone. So. So on the website deliverables, the criteria overview, we have the Ridgway events and Ashley has updated all of these. I made a couple edits, which I'll, I'll share. But the Ridgway events completed, the, the website has actually been really cool because Ashley just has to approve. She gets an alert and she can read the content, approve it, not approve it, communicate with the person that has submitted an event, whatever that is.
Did you say that Ashley left?
Yes, Ashley resigned a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. So you'll hire someone new for that?
I am the new person.
She's like, he is the new person and she's in the transition.
Okay, okay. So she's still helping because you were referring to her and I was like, wait, you said she left?
She did.
But she was.
She did leave and I'm doing my best because she's become a personal friend and she has so much knowledge of everything. I'm sort of holding her by the legs and you can't go too far just yet because she's the one that's been working with CTO. She's the one that does our video production. She's coordinated so many important things that I'm, I'm doing most of it at this point, but I'm still also, because of what we mentioned earlier, we have a team. We have Christina, we have Daniel and then our content writer and, and Ashley is going to, she, and she can speak for herself, but at this time she's going to slide into continuing on the projects that she's been so important being a part of. Like, for example, we went, Tara Kylie and I went to present for the Board of Commissioners in Erie County last week. And Ashley was nice and came as a backup because she was the one that did all the research with these guys. So I'm, I'm just kind of gently sliding in on some of these projects. So the events, our event calendar, from what I'm told, is much better than it's been in recent years. And we'll talk more about other efforts here in a few minutes. But business directory seems like, it seems like that's up to date from what I, what I've seen. It's a work in progress, always trying to see what businesses are where and, and how they're doing. Information on Fuse, Creative Corridor and initiatives. So these are just checking the boxes on the PSA and the vast majority of them have, have been checked. Criteria for success. So 60,000 annual website sessions. So we're, our run rate is, is higher on that, which is great. We're way beyond the expectation. The increase in 15% unique visitors compared to prior year. So this is, this is up, but the thing that is a red flag and concerns me, and we've asked ourselves as a board at the chamber, why is, you know, we're shooting for a 30% increase in returning visitors. Why is that down 59%? I don't have the answer today. Speculating, I think that people are Instagram has absolutely blown up. So one theory is people are going there for their event information instead of the website. So that, that's really my, my biggest theory. And then there's, there's multiple sources. There's two or three good quality, either Town of Ridgway or otherwise Facebook pages. I don't know enough about it yet to have a firm opinion on why some of the, the traffic isn't as high as, for example, our Instagram. So that's a TBD that I have to dive deeper into to have a better understanding of it. But that, again, just wanted to reiterate that, that on my radar is why are people not coming to the website and figuring out where they're going to get the information instead? All right. So social media, we work primarily on Facebook, Instagram. We meet all the, the criterias for success, the three hard postings. I put an in-progress on social media, social media post reach, a minimum of 10% engagement. I put that in progress because we were in a meeting last week. And I think there was confusion on our part on what exact, how do we actually quantify that? And we now have a better understanding after speaking with Tara and Preston and we have a better understanding of what the goal is behind that requirement on the PSA. Don't have any data to, to quant, truly quantify it today. Have to figure out how to, to, basically, we're trying to see the quality of the post, not just the overall, this many people posted, this many people engaged. It's like, what are the individual posts? What's the value to the community? And that's something that I, that I look forward to circling back on. Social media followers have increased. Facebook is up over 13%. Instagram is up significantly. So, and the engagement on Instagram especially is, is good. And, and the Facebook engagement, when I compare it to the other sites, just taking quick reads on them, the work that Christina and, and Ash are doing is getting far more engagement than any other site that I can see. So I don't fully know the history of why there's multiple, but the more I learn, the better. I'll be making suggestions. All right. So again, to the PSA criteria for success, newsletters have been sent. That number of email recipients increased. That, that's one. It's, it's year, year-to-date 1.5%. Again, I'm not sure why. I know we have a pop-up on the website to get people to subscribe, but I think that there are some innovative things that we can do to get more people on the newsletter. A quick example, I have, I work and help manage some of the larger festivals around and we'll do giveaways. So I, you know, I have complimentary passes to share with the community of Ridgway from like Blues and Brews, for example. So we're talking about as a board, how do we give something to the, the community here while also increasing that? And it might be a sign up for our newsletter to be the, in a contest to win a pair of Bluegrass tickets, you know, $800 up, something like that. But we're talking through that and how the best increase and get those numbers up. All right. So the four seasonal marketing campaigns, the chamber was tasked with developing these digitally, print and otherwise. So criteria for success, chamber achieved a total impression count of at least 20,000 impressions per campaign across social media. We're still working on that. I mean, frankly, it's, it's a conversation about, and I, and I don't fully have access to it yet, but it's really a conversation about how do we get good data so that we can make good statements about what's happening and what, and, and it's accurate. And that's what I, I'm in the process of learning, but a lot of it is just, it's doing our best based on prior year reports and, and lining up percentages as best we can. But that's one thing that I'm going to work to tighten up and get better data where we can. And then 5% increase in event attendees or business visitation during campaign periods, measured through direct feedback or business reports. And this is another one that we're, we've, we've talked about the last couple of board meetings. As I see this, it's, yeah, Ashley put the chamber still looking to further fine tune this. At the end of the day, to, to qualify a 5% increase in attendance or business visitation, we have to have participation from the business owner. We have to have a relationship with them. And when I, when I have businesses, I'm not just going to give my numbers. So my solution to that would be a follow-up event survey and say, would you say you had no increase based on this event? Was it zero to five percent, five to 10%, 10 to 15% is the way I'm thinking about this right now. But we're actively talking about this as a board because that's a tricky one. I mean, to get, to get businesses to, what were your exact sales on that day? And how do we know that what we're doing is successful? Because often they just, you know, they just will disappear from contact after the event is done. So that's another thing that's on my, near the top of my priorities. Again, I like data and to quantify and understand if we're being successful in our efforts. And that's something that, that we can improve on. All right. So the visitor center. So my understanding, last year it was seven days a week from 10 to four every day. This year it changed and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's five days. So this number is extremely low. Number of annual visitors was to increase by 10% over 2024 levels. The, through end of June, it was 298. I can tell you, I, because I was there today, I manually added it up. And we're, we've gotten, I think we had 161 in July and our run rate right now is barely going to exceed that if all else stays the same. So we're still getting some activity. Sadly, we get, when there's an accident nearby, we get more activity because when the roads are closed, I've noticed people are coming in because they've been sitting in traffic for, you know, hours. But that number is coming up, but it's nowhere near the 1,700 goal that is in place.
And that's totally volunteer-based, right? Keeping the visitor center open.
It, I, yes, but Saturday and Sunday, Monday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is volunteer. Saturday, Sunday is paid. So there are consist, there's consistency on the weekends. The weekdays are what figuring out. And my understanding is Ashley's just really struggled to get people to stay involved in that volunteer role.
Yes.
And just some, some achievements. And, you know, and again, the way I view this, and the more I get to know you all, and I see so much fun collaboration that's going to benefit everyone. But like the, Ashley got awarded a $20,000 grant by Colorado Tourism Office, which we're meeting next week. And I'm going to, she's introducing me to the girl that's in charge of all that. But the marketing video is really nice. And, and hopefully we can show that to you here in a second. But tourism marketing video highlighting summer activities, summer film shoot. Ashley contracted with Basis Creative Film and they have drones out there. And they just wrapped up two weeks ago with the next marketing video that we'll have samples of that to share with you at some point, not too far down the road. And then let me, let me talk to these other two and then maybe we can see if we can show that film. So the CTO Destination Blueprint program. So after Ashley shared a lot of, a massive Google Drive with me that I've been kind of scrubbing down and seeing what I could learn from it. My takeaway, we were awarded one of the top, one of five people, one, five communities in the state. $100 consultation was significant, as well as there's some assets, digital assets that promoting a good environment, don't litter and bear aware, a lot of things like that. As I've looked through our social media in the past, those are pulled from this program and it's, they're a really good asset. The partnership with them. And Ashley's been stressing that to me as a board member the last seven or eight months. But having dove into the documents, it's a really valuable relationship from my perspective. So, and I, and I don't see it going anywhere. And then other chamber events, I mean, we have, as a chamber, we have business roundtables. Of course, the, the Volunteer Career Fair, Earth Day, Towning Tuesdays, Appreciation Party. Noel Night is a big one for the community and the businesses, I think. I'm, I've attended other Noel Nights in the region and some of them are extremely popular. So Mishi, who was on the board, she's still involved in helping with that. And I, I'm having coffee with her next week. I've talked to her on the phone a couple of days ago and she's still very excited to be a part of Noel Night. So I, my hope is that, and we've submitted the permitting and paid all the stuff. Everything's approved, slight course modification, pedestrian traffic because of issues last year. And I don't, I didn't witness it exactly, but it sounds like the flow of pedestrian traffic was encumbering. So that's going to be fixed this year. And again, just a side note, one thing, again, because I love helping businesses, like what Matt did with his blog party last, last week, week and a half ago. I talked to other business owners in, on that particular street. And my goal in leading this chamber and helping the town is like, we get all these businesses together and they're more of a community. Matt told me that there, the sales, several businesses in the immediate area hit record sales because of that block party. And I get excited about doing stuff like that. They're easy to put on, get all the permitting done properly. And then it, it's a win-win for everybody's, including the town. So in the future, I'm going to be trying to stir up a lot more of that sort of activity. All right. So the financials, and if you have any questions, Jane should be online. But this is broken down, the P and L for the lodging tax class. Income is just shy of $30,000. You can see a breakdown of the expenses, advertising, promotion. I'm just getting up to speed and more intimate with where all these payments and, and things go and how they're classified. And, and as you all know, it's like a balancing act between the chamber and the, the PSA and being the destination marketing organization for town. So I'm looking forward to learn how to better quantify all of this and the distribution of the money and where it's going and all that. But it's a, it's showing a loss for that, those funds in particular. And if you have any questions, Jane should be on the line and I'm happy to meet with any of you this week or whatever and share everything that I've known or that I've seen and that I know. Yeah. So thank you and looking forward to working more with you guys and excited about the fall and just keep everything going forward.
See the film?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Also, the, you're good to go every season adventure brochure. Where is that? Is that presented around town?
The visitor guide?
Yeah, visitor guide.
So we've received a palette of those that Ashley was, she spearheaded that effort. Local photographer, I forget his name. His pictures are on the front of it. We have those. They've been distributed. It, distribution is ongoing. I handed one to a gentleman in the visitor center today and because he was interested in, in the town map. And I also told him where he could go to get a digital version if he needed it. Another thing Ashley's working on, because I'm copied on all these emails now and I'm seeing what's, what's going on. And she's looking at a twice annual walking visitor guide to, to supplement the digital version and getting an understanding of the cost of that and, and what's involved. But that's, that's in motion right now, which is pretty cool. So which, yeah. Can you do the, one of them's 60, I think. The top one? Wait, no, 10 seconds. Yeah, one of them is 60 seconds.
The photos were Gary Rex's.
Yes, yes. Thank you. These are starting to play next month in the Montrose Airport on a loop as well as the Telluride Airport.
Pardon me? Playing a baggage plane? Is that right? At the airport?
I believe the, yes, on the monitors that they have there.
Yeah.
For now.
Yeah. And I mean, I'll say, when I was at the Fuse meeting last month, I saw the one, but I think you guys did where Joan was speaking. And that one was a great one as well. It touched, it drove deeper on the, the soul of the community, in my opinion. And I really liked that one a lot, too. A lot of good assets.
Hey, thanks, John. Anybody have questions for John?
Welcome. Look, swimming in the deep end.
Yeah, it's good he's been around since January. He might go to Montleby since that's my enthusiasm thing. And so at least he's not just completely jumping in. He's got six months under his belt.
If I would have been here in January, I would, I would, it'd be a different story.
One of, one of the things that comes to mind for me is, and I don't know how we would quantify this. So this is really just kind of less of a question than an opening and dialogue is trying to quantify what those conversations of the visitor, visitor center are accomplishing. Like even if it was just like a Trying to quantify what those conversations of the visitor, visitor center are accomplishing, like even if it was just like a general. Category tally, it would hand it out some walking maps or we recommended a restaurant, you know, some of. Kind of understanding what those volunteer hours are netting. Like, I don't know, I don't exactly what that would look like, but that's something that I think might be useful.
I think that's a great question, one I was thinking about as recently as today. So currently. The volunteers, whoever's in there, you know, in that capacity, we document every single entry. It's, it's on paper, literally. So I'm, I'm looking at that and I was thinking today, can we somehow, you know. Put a computer to that or something that then we can sort the data and have a clear understanding. Somebody came in just for the bathroom, somebody came in. To fill their water on their trailer out front, somebody came in for a map, somebody, so I'm on the same page.
It's like a Google form that they could fill out each time or is, I don't know, but yeah.
And then create something like that.
Would love to know what. Do, because that is so much manpower. So what are we getting? We do that.
Yeah, and I, I mean, my response would, again, I was thinking about this exact thing today, just while I was in there. You know, maybe we come up with ten to fifteen categories, but then we get, like I had a girl call me today that said her boyfriend. Was at, uh, Orbis Hot Springs and she hadn't heard from him for a couple of days. So she wanted to know if there was a, a camp for fire evacu- evacuation. And I said, well, it's smoky here, so we were on the phone a while. I ended up sending her, I gave her the numbers to the. Yuri Visitor Center and the Fire Station and Rico and I told her there could be, but there's nothing, there's no camps that I'm aware of that are set up in. Ridgeway, but I call Rico and see if, you know, that could be, because he's like a do-gooder, he's going to go jump in and help people with. You know, whatever, and she hadn't talked to him in two or three, so there's random stuff like that that would, I suppose would go under other.
Um, how often is the website updated?
So I don't know exactly. I do know there are some things that need to be updated. I can tell you, I met with the guy who has been the, the key. He's the developer as well as the updater. Met with him, we're changing some domain, hosting stuff over. What I have, what I have asked of him is how do we do this in a way where we can? One, update it ourselves so that we don't have to go through the process, which is easy. I've done that before, but I'm not. I haven't used Juma, Juma per se, so he's actually, he's sending me data so I can see if it's something that I can do. Manually, because I'm, I'm generally familiar with, you know, your. Over the counter websites and I can, I know a little bit about coding, so I'm, I'm going to learn on that, but I, I don't think it's updated enough. And I think that's part of the process that Ashley has to go through. I mean, this guy seems like a good guy and he's very knowledgeable. He's not going to be helping us because he's going towards AI and. He's shutting down his, his Jumo business. So again, talked to him yesterday, learned a little bit. I'll know a lot more in a couple of days and I'm happy to share with you once I know, but needs to be updated, like constantly.
I just was looking at it and I noticed, um, Blaine Basin is a hiking trail. Suggestion on there and that's not open.
You can't get to it.
And, but you can't.
Into it if you went up County Road five and then took Dallas Trail off.
I think those are super hard things to update though, if no one reports it, because where's the mechanism? Speaking out loud here, like where's the mechanism, like if you're, if you're the chamber or whatever, whoever's doing this. Like you might be really knowledgeable about the bike trails, but not about the hiking trails or about, you know what I mean? Like, I mean, I knew Glakes was closed, but. I, that means absolutely nothing, meaning like Blaine Basin, I've never been there, I don't know anything about it, so. Like how to, like, I wonder what the mechanism would be to make that a more, like, something that is the thing to daily.
One of the ways would be to partner with the business that does that, like I almost wondered, does it make sense for us to be quantifying? All of these hiking trails instead of being, go to Ridgway Adventure Sports and have a chat with them. Cause Blaine Basin would be really low on, like if I just had a random person approach me and said, where should I hike? If I like had, hung out with you, maybe they were visiting Colorado and I got a feel for what their hiking experience was. But I would love to see a few classics. You know, things that are pretty general accessibility and then which point. Point them to Ridgway Adventure Sports, point them to Moxie Mountain Guides, like point them to, to business. Cause I, I'm right, you're absolutely right. That's how do you do that?
Right, yeah, but yeah, I mean, like for sure, like, oh, you're going to go do. Workhouse, you're going to go do like, like ones that people are more familiar with that are more doable and. And then direct them to like a local business who can give them specific information.
Yeah, and it, it was mostly just, I know that I've used. Uh, Chamber of Commerce websites when I've gone on trips before and like looked at hiking trails around and. It, I would be incredibly sad.
Well, I've caught people at the visitor center that, you know, I try to gauge their fitness and give them guidance on to not get in over their heads.
Do you have a rain check?
Nobody needs to hang out with.
Good, good news with that one, I'm probably is that they've done a really good job, which is like a, that County Road is no forest access, so they weren't going to get.
Awesome. Thanks for the presentation.
Other questions?
I don't think it's good. We're not gonna, we're not gonna hammer you.
Thank you. All right, thank you guys, appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, Elaine, apologies you weren't here, so we go into the next round. We've moved fast, yeah.
Yeah, well, thank you and thank you to everyone for allowing me this opportunity to be here. Tonight and give you an update on the Tire Aid Foundation's Down Payment Assistance Program. And of course to ask for your support. I don't know if my, um, slide can go up there. I just have one slide, so. It should be pretty quick, but, um, just as a little bit of a background, um, as the documents, um. Stated that were in your packet, the Tire Aid Foundation has been offering down payment assistance for a couple of years now, since two thousand nineteen. That program's been, um, it's the second one in the middle column, the bottom there, it's been a small forgivable loan program. Which provided up to five thousand dollars to families, qualifying families to help them purchase a home. So very helpful, but really more like those last mile costs. It wasn't really moving the needle in terms of. Um, making homeownership poss- possible for people that don't have the down payment. So, um, since that time, we've helped, um, about a hundred families. And all this information is in those packets that, um, that are in your larger packet, but. Um, about a hundred families, about two hundred people across the region, so great program, but, um, we, uh, decided about. Two years ago to start researching what else we could do. You know, could we come up with something more meaningful, more robust? And after about eighteen months of research. In April of twenty twenty-five, we were able to raise one point. Three million dollars and launched this new, more robust. Down Payment Assistance Program, which is a shared appreciation model. So qualifying, um, members of our regional workforce. And to qualify, you, um, have to work full-time in the region, you have to be at a hundred percent, a hundred and fifty percent or lower. Area of the area median income, the home has to be de-restricted, it can't be more than eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's some net asset requirements, so there are some guidelines that we follow, but if you qualify and the property qualifies. We can loan you up to, uh, twenty percent of the cost of your home and right now in Yuray County, that's capped at fifty thousand dollars. Um, in San Miguel County, it's capped at a hundred and I'll explain that later when we get, um, towards the, the asset I'm making of. Of you all. Um, so we launched the program in April and we've made three loans so far. The first loan was in Ridgway, the second was in Yuray and third was in Telluride. And I'm working on two loans right now. They're both in the unincorporated areas of San Miguel County. Those families, um, it's been amazing working with those folks. The first family. Had lived in the community for seven years, the second family twenty-one years. And the last family, well, it's a single guy from Telluride, uh, three years. So these are folks that have already made, uh, commitments to this community, they're part of our workforce and there's just no way they would have been able to buy. These houses without that support. So to explain the shared appreciation model a little bit more, um, they, the applicant, the borrower does not make. Any payments on the loan, there are zero interest loans for the life of the loan. And the way we get, the way the fund gets paid back is when the borrower sells or refinances their home. They pay back the full principal and a pro rata share of the appreciation that they make in the home that they're selling. So for example, if we gave, if we provided a ten percent loan, just to make the math easy, I'm going to use a hundred percent appreciation. They would pay a hundred thousand dollars in appreciation, they would pay the fund back the full principal plus ten percent. Of that hundred thousand because that's what we gave them. So that loan would cost them ten thousand dollars. But they don't pay that until they have the money to pay that because they've just sold their home. Uh, we are also offering home buyer education. I'm doing the first one in September over in Telluride and then the fall. Later in the fall, we'll do another one over here and then in the winter, we'll, we'll do one in West Montrose County, New Glen Naterita. So this program is available across the Tire Aid Foundation service area, all of San Miguel County, all of Yuray County. West Montrose County, which is New Glen Naterita and the town of Rico. Um, the fund sources are basically from the generosity of our donors who really want to help. Um, as I mentioned, we raised a million three to launch this thing, that's going to cover our costs for one year. And, um, I'm the VP of Operations for the foundation, but I spend the vast majority of my time on this program. So we started with, you know, a design phase, fundraising phase, and then so far since April, it's been. Get the loans out the door, so it's been more operational and now we're starting to think about, okay, what's going to happen in twenty twenty-six? So we need to raise an additional million two and that's why I'm here this evening to ask the town of Ridgway if you would like to support this program. Um, you, the way the support has worked so far, as I've worked with different municipalities. Counties and I did, I did present to Yuray County last couple of weeks ago, but it was a little bit too early in their budget cycle to make an official ask. So I'll be going back to them and the way we worked it out with San Miguel County, because they did participate, they donated two hundred thousand dollars to the program. Is that the Tire Aid Foundation will always provide the first, like the basis of the loan. The first fifty thousand dollars in the case in San Miguel County and then I use San Miguel County's money to stack on top of that, so I can give. More money and I will say the two loans that we did over here in Yuray County, the second one, it was fine with the fifty thousand dollar loan. The first one, it was really difficult and it would have been nice to have a little bit more. So the, the support that I'm asking of the town of Ridgway is to help us increase that fifty thousand dollars. To a little bit more for those families that need more. So for example, if you're buying a five hundred thousand dollar house, did I say that the max home price is eight fifty? Yes, so if you're buying a five hundred thousand doll- dollar house, if you're lucky enough to find one, twenty percent down is a hundred thousand dollars. And people just don't have it, so I can give them fifty right now until the money runs out. But it's really nice, I mean, a lot of young couples will have ten thousand dollars or fifteen, if they're lucky enough, maybe they have thirty. But they don't have a hundred or they don't have eighty and so being able to stack the money on top just means that we can serve more. Families. Um, so that is why I'm, what I'm here for, to ask for your support and I'm happy to take questions. It, I have to admit, it's been a bit of a learning, um, experience for all of us. Um, the, the Impact Development Fund, which I think many of you are aware of, they help with the Swiss Village and they do other programs here. They are administering the program for us, which is, has been amazing because we're not licensed to make mortgages, so these are second mortgages. Leans on the property. Um, and so in the unlikely event that somebody would foreclose, there's all these gyrations for us to get these funds back. Um, if you are, if you're interested in supporting it, we can limit your funds to just properties in the town of Ridgway. Or properties in Yuray County or whatever, um, you are interested in doing. And, um, before I take questions, I just want to, again, thank you for your time and I appreciate, everyone's been. Really positive every time I've talked to you all about this, so I appreciate that and it's working. I mean, we were thinking we'd make about one loan a month, um, it started in April, we'd made three loans, we're sort of on track. Our projections were between ten and twelve loans in the first year and I think we're going to do that. Um, so yeah, it's very exciting.
It's great. It is exciting, um. A hundred thousand bucks for Ridgway is, is a lot, but, um, we're approaching budget season.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's not really the right time or budget season either to make an ask or agree to an ask right now. I for sure would say we did this, it should be for Town or Bridgway purchases only, mainly using the Town or Bridgway. Funds, I mean, that's how I would look at it. I guess my concern is if you say it's up to eight hundred fifty thousand dollars and you're doing the first fifty. Eight hundred fifty thousand dollar purchase, that's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. For twenty percent down, so if you're doing the first fifty, then that homeowner still needs a hundred and twenty thousand. Even if Ridgway could dedicate a hundred thousand, what, where's the extra funds coming from? Is that where other donors come in or would only a. Per, percentage of our, our give. Purchase or?
So far, it's, it's been okay. We haven't done an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar house yet. The first one was, was in partnership with the Yuri Trust, um, and that house was four. Um, the other house was a water view and that started with a four also. And the third house was a ca- uh, price cap de-restricted home in the town of Telluride and that, uh, was. Under three.
So, so these have all primarily been folks who would fall under that one twenty AMI that you have worked with so far.
Yes, um, we, we set the limit at a hundred and fifty percent AMI, right? And people have been, had concerns about that, it's not high enough, people at two hundred percent AMI can't afford. This is a pilot program, a two-year pilot program, so you know, we set the guidelines. After quite a bit of research, you know, what it, two teachers make, what does a nurse and a teacher make, what is a, somebody who works at the library and a teacher make and we. We sort of settled in on a hundred and fifty to try and address the missing middle, but not go too far. Um, the other, the other qualification is that the individual, the applicant must have already worked in the region for one year. And that has also been a little bit of a challenge. Uh, we had to turn away somebody in Yuray who was a brand new teacher. Heartbreaking, however, I've turned away a lot of other people who didn't qualify and we're using this two-year pilot. Timeframe to like really study, like who do we have to turn away? And a, a year from now, that person can come back, you know, as I mentioned, you know, the, uh, seven years, twenty-one years. Three years, these are people who, who have made a commitment to be here and that's really where we thought we should start. And it doesn't mean we won't be making adjustments at the end of this pilot program, no doubt we will. Um, because it's, you know, it feels bad not to be able to support a brand new teacher. Who wants to move to the region and needs a house. But I don't think for, for us, it's not an issue unless I can't deploy the rest of this money, right? And then I, we have to look at like, why couldn't we?
And I wasn't, I wasn't critiquing your, uh, AMI level, I think that really makes sense as a pilot. I was actually a little bit surprised that. We weren't seeing that one twenty to one fifty, because that's one of the things that this program really. When I think about how we're going to spend money on affordable housing in Ridgway. We think about, we really covered the low end of space to create, we've done a bunch in that. Uh, sixty to one twenty with some of the deed restricted properties and so this grabs another little chunk. And I know we're all thinking about that one fifty to two hundred, but. You've really put together something that I think is a really cool model. You know, and whether it can be a hundred grand or, but it is something that I will think about in terms of what's our mix for twenty twenty-six.
The, the other thing I'd throw out and answer to you, Josie, is that, um, we're not going to see many eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar deed restricted.
Yeah, I was just wondering what, what the, what the plan was, if that happens, if they set the level at eight fifty, what if it is eight fifty? Because it doesn't have to be deed restricted now, it can become deed restricted. So it doesn't have to be done, so it doesn't have to be.
And we also are remembering, this program is both Yuray and San Miguel Counties and Telluride is a really different ballgame. For sure, I would throw out that I would be willing to consider Ridgway funds going to a Ridgway employee. Who might be looking elsewhere within the county. Like I think we've been partners with the county and the city in terms of having affordable housing. So, I mean, we can have that discussion when we get to that point, but I'm with you, I would love to see them in Ridgway, but if. Somebody who's a Ridgeway employee is an opportunity in Yuray.
Right, they have ten acres for their chicken.
Yeah, we can discuss that later for sure.
I am working on our very first free market property right now. Um, it's very complicated, but we're getting through it, uh, the buyer. Uh, the buyer and the, the HOA, the original developer, they're all, everybody's fine with de-restricting this property. But um, it is in Samago County, so we will be using one of the covenants in Samago County to um, impose on that property. And then Sam, the Samago County Regional Housing Authority will end up enforcing it. Um, so lots of partnerships, lots of people, lots of different entities involved in this, but um, it's been really. Rewarding and refreshing that everybody really wants to help. So um. I think hopefully we'll continue to help more people and um, I'm not sure what the next step is with you all to make an official ask, but um. I'm just here tonight to give you an update and.
Yeah, you, you've made your ask. Um, Preston and Pam will, will file it with the rest of the budget documents, request for, for funding and. We'll dig into it as we get further along the budget process.
That's great. And, and also just a final note, I have a lot of different buckets of money, if you will, that are restricted like in a bunch of different ways. So I got that covered. So if you want to do Ridgway, they can work here, they could live anywhere, that's fine. They have to live and work here, that's also fine, because you know, we're not talking about thousands of loans here. We've made three. And I know these families now really well, so I get to know the family, I get to know the employer. Um, these are, you know, it's not a huge volume.
No.
So I can take money from different buckets and make sure that the money, however you want your money restricted, that is um, honored. And tracked and adhered to, so it's not.
What I love about this is that, I've always talked about the, the housing crisis is a matter of a thousand piece puzzle, you know, it's like. There are a lot of pieces to this puzzle, and yours is an excellent example of, of one piece of the puzzle that addresses a need. And we can get a bunch more of these kind of puzzle pieces, we can, you know, get that.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I really look at it as really, it's an equity issue, right? It's like, it's helping the people whose parents don't have the money to give them. To help them buy a house, which many young people have, but not everyone. You know, so for me, it's about just equity and opening up homeownership to everybody, so.
Anybody in the audience have questions for Elaine? I'd like to ask about anybody on Zoom. Oh, sorry, very random, but if, if someone uh. Uh, is there any sort of clawback if someone all of a sudden uh, hits, gets open follow of some sort?
There is, there, there is an incentive. If you get your windfall within three years, you can pay us back and you don't have to share in any of the appreciation. So that, I'd call that, I guess, an incentive more than a windfall.
So you're still zero percent for three.
You're still zero percent for you. I mean, our goal, obviously, in that case, would be, you know, claw the money back so we can give it to someone else.
And then I, I would guess all your forward models, a sale of certain appreciation, right?
Yeah, the, the issue with, with especially over in Telluride is most, if all of the properties in, in um, the city limits, the town limits. Have price caps on them. So they can make three percent, four percent, I think four is the highest, compounded annually, so this is not a big money-making thing for us, but. Um, those are the properties that are, you know, start with a three or four, because they've been price capped all these years.
Great. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Questions from anybody?
See the hands up on Zoom.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for the presentation.
Sorry I was late, I.
It's okay.
I was counting how long all those minutes would take, and I was like, all right.
Thanks, Elaine. Thank you. Drive safe. Happy birthday to your husband.
Thanks.
All right, that takes us to item number nine, presentation and request, uh, quest for direction on draft, question proposal for marketing and tourism promotion services.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So we're going to shift gears back to uh, all things marketing and tourism promotion. So yeah, thanks. Thanks again for the presentation, John. Everybody else in the chamber. Um, so as requested by you all, uh, in the early part of twenty twenty five, it's either January or February, and current. Professional services agreement between the town and the chamber was uh, was approved. Um, we got direction from you all to, to draft a request for a proposal for, for marketing and tourism promotion services. Uh, which is now before you even the packet, so there's a lot of information in the staff report, obviously in the RFP too, so hopefully you had. You know, a chance to at least browse all that information, so I won't read everything word for word, but we'll highlight. Some of those pieces like the scope and then the recommended framework for uh, at least from a staff standpoint for how to, how to proceed with. Uh, all those elements going forward. So ultimately, the RFP is seeking proposals from professional consultants for overseeing and coordinating advertising. Tourism promotion and marketing services on behalf of the town. Uh, I already mentioned all the stuff within the, within the staff report, but it not only outlines a scope. Uh, they find within the RFP itself, but it outlines a, a recommended framework for visitor services and marketing. Uh, and it was developed uh, in response to direction we received from uh, from you all in the last year, actually the last couple of years. Uh, and, and recent community and stakeholder input, uh, the Dest- Destination Blueprint, uh. Initiative document that, that was released, and I think that's appended to the staff report as well. Um, and ultimately, it came by way of a lot of conversations between myself and Tara. Uh, over the last few months and even, even before that. So um. I'll, I'll touch on what I consider to be the high points uh, that would require an allotment of, of the lodging tax dollars. So they are what um. I can say this is Tara, this is Tara's word, and I like it a lot, I'm using her, but it's the marketing strategist. Um, which is what we're seeking via the RFP, right? So we call it the marketing strategist. Um, and using quotes again, visitor touchpoints and business engagement, that's a totally separate element there. Um, with a separate scope than what uh, we're seeking through the RFP, and that scope is specific to the local side of things. Uh, and you know, the visitor, visitor center type things that we just heard John talk, talk about for quite some time. Um, and then. And then the third element, using quotes again, countywide event calendar, that revolves around an initiative for a regional calendar platform. Through a regional partnership, and you're going to hear about that in a few minutes more about that. So, you know, I know that's, that's pretty brief, didn't want to go word for word through that staff report and what the ultimate recommendation is, but hopefully just trying to paint a picture of. Of how we're trying to divvy this out going forward using lodging tax dollars. So all that said, there is no action requested of you all tonight, we're simply looking for some direction on how to proceed. Um, the RFP has a very specific timeline uh, in there, which is, you know, of course, subject to. Or can be subject to change, but you know, looking to follow that as, as closely as we can going into budget season and towards the end of twenty twenty five. So a direction on the makeup of the RFP, specifically the, the scope of services we'd be looking for from the marketing strategist would be, would be great. Um, and then um, you know, beyond that, on that recommended framework that I, you know, kind of briefly covered and uh, you know, Tara's here and she. Be happy to give her perspective or elaborate on any of that. Um, but yeah, we need. Direction on all of that, uh, so that we can proceed into the uh, the budget season and know how to forward into twenty twenty six. Have the answer to your questions.
When you made the choice to split up the two different sections, one and two, um, did, you were terrible, we worked on this donation. Take into account what the cost of like the visitor guide is, like when that. I'm just concerned, I can't remember off the top of my head, and I don't, I don't know if Gina's still on the screen, my eyes, the bads, I can't tell anyway. Um, but I'm a little concerned, if you're, I guess splitting it totally, but I'm a little concerned that that twenty-five thousand dollar. Budget is going to be pretty low. If they're supposed to be distributing the print maps and guides and doing all these other local operation things in terms of. I'm just curious, like how you decided to go sixty thousand, twenty-five thousand split? Like what was the?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, largely guided by the dollars that have been coming in in the last few years, trying to be conservative with that, didn't uh. Uh, at least from my standpoint, Tara may have taken into consideration, but yeah, didn't look at the total cost of. Any of those specific elements like, like visitor's guide, other maps, other print material. The other thing is uh, you know, we need direction on if that's something you want to consult going forward. Right? So uh, it's not a given that that's how we want to pursue that, that type of. Uh, material going forward. So we discussed in the past, I feel like digital coin route for that visitor's guide, but.
Well, I think that's why now the chamber's been doing every other year of a paper one with the yearly insert, the walking map, and they also did it. Sure. Just curious how it was chosen, because definitely the print guides are expensive. The time to put it together and the cost of actually printing it, seven, seven eighty.
Tara, before you answer that question, could I add to that question, which is, and I read through this in detail, but it was a few, several days ago. Are there two separate RFPs, one for the marketing strategist, one for the visitor touchpoints, or are they bundled into one RFP?
So.
I'm sure it's in there somewhere.
So how, how we're proposing, we think about this is to actually separate them. Um, I don't know if we would do two RFPs, um, but one, the primary RFP would be for marketing. Up until now, our agreement with the chamber has been primarily around the marketing piece. Um, and then operating of the visitor center. Um, they have also pursued um, grants from the Colorado Tourism Office. And, and served as our touchpoint for the Colorado Tourism Office as well, and then also taken a uh, role in like business-to-business. Um, type of support, which we have not compensated them for directly out of the RFP, it hasn't been contemplated within the deliverables. Um, and so what this does is kind of um, like. Allocate some, some resources in the twenty-five thousand dollars in a fee-for-service model. Um, to honor the importance of that business-to-business role. Um, and being able to um, you know, have, have that role. Um, and recognizing that that may be the same group that does both of those roles, and it could maybe not be the same group that does both of those roles. Um, I think a, a group that has a lot of expertise in marketing, um, would be very highly competitive for the, for the marketing piece. Um, and that gives the, gives the council or the staff, you know, the decision makers on this, the, the freedom to be able to either. Allocate that, both of those to one single group if that made sense, or to split those out to two separate groups if that made sense.
Presumably, the, the marketing portion of, uh, the marketing strategist could be somebody that's virtual, located locally.
It makes that possible.
Likely needed to be, so.
It just makes me so nervous to, I mean, I know this is, we have to get the RFPs, but to have an out-of-town mar- out-of-town marketing person, they're not going to be getting pictures that like. At any of the events in town to post on social media, like how do you get like the actual. Photos of the events going on, you know?
Part of what.
A whole other thing, but.
And that could be something we weigh when we get.
Totally. It's just a concern of mine just reading this, like, yeah.
Part of what you'll see in there is, is a requirement to subcontract with local content creators.
Okay.
Um, so that's, that's how we were thinking to do that, knowing that there could be applicants from outside of the area, though there are also maybe qualified applicants in the area. So you'll have to weigh that when it comes closer.
I want to thank you, Tara and Preston, because we've had a lot of conversations about this, I kind of teased at our structure. Um, I know we've talked about some of the complications of a fully tax-funded business. Model where they're trying to facilitate the business-to-business piece and ask for dues. But how do you do that when you can't prioritize your members in the same way? Um, I, when I read through this, I was really, really excited, and I think you guys did a really good job of encapsulating some of the tough conversations that we've had. So thank you very much.
What, something I want to ask is specifically coordination and oversight. Do you and the staff have the bandwidth? Or that if this were to.
And, and.
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 Good, um, Preston and I have discussed that, and obviously that's his call, how that gets allocated. Um, I would assume I'd be part, you know, part of that team, um, in my role, I do have the bandwidth for that, having gone up to full-time this year. From part-time, and now I'm back from leave and, and evolved with family difficulties we were dealing with, so I. I, and, and, but I'm not necessarily assigned, that just says staff in general, so that would be Preston's call on where he wanted to assign those responsibilities.
Building on his question, would it says that function, not lodging tax dollars, would that be a separate budget line? Not only is it implicit in current staff activities?
So uh, so Tara will certainly have a role in, in coordination and oversight, and I, what, you know, I don't want to underpin it, but it. I view it largely the same as it's going now, Tara Spearbend, I administer and oversees the current contract with the chamber, she does a great job. What was your question, sir?
Would the monies associated with the number one coordination oversight, would that be a separate new uh, budget line anymore, or is it implicit in existing staff?
Ex- existing uh, general fund operating dollars as we.
It's very similar.
Just the current makeup of the budget date, Tara's time, and any, any.
But no efficient line of funds appropriate of that.
Thank you. But I think this is really, really important, because we're talking about the spending of public dollars. So bringing this coordination and oversight, creating however that structure winds up looking in this building. Is so important for people to be able to weigh in on how these, you know, pots of money are being spent online. You know, how do we, you know, hear about a post that didn't jive with community, like, oh, that felt weird? Like, how do we get that communication? So. I understand your concern about bandwidth, but I also think it's important. That we keep some level of that oversight in a, a more clear way than we've had.
That was our sense as well. And the other piece that you'll notice um, in that oversight role is being the main point of contact with the Colorado Tourism Office. Um, the chamber has done a great job of that up until now. We thought that, we were sure that that um. Was in best alignment with the practices recommended by the Colorado Tourism Office. Um, having somebody in the governmental role play that coordination, rather than a contractor, seemed more appropriate to us. Um, not that we would have to do all of the work, but that we would be in a, a kind of a first point of contacting coordination seemed to us appropriate. Um, to your point, um, I, I think another piece that's significant that we haven't spoken about yet. Um, is um, and kind of goes to the conversation we were having earlier about the visitor center and the sort of um. The, the return on investment for the visitor center, given um, given the struggles of keeping that staff and that kind of relative expense um, in time and personnel. We're actually recommending a digital-first strategy, um, and suggesting potentially um. I don't know what the long-term plan is for a new build of a visitor center, if that's still on the radar, but in the, in the meantime. Um, makes doing a, um, at least a pilot of a, of doing some digital kiosks in some of the busier places around town, be that the town. You know, town hall, or maybe some of the um, other businesses around the community. Um, and maybe it's a, a couple of kiosks to see how that works, like an iPad with a stand is what you would picture. Um, or possibly even a poster with a QR code that says, go here and then you go to our destination marketing site. Um, so those are some, that's an idea, which is a fairly significant change, and I just wanted to draw the council's attention to that for consideration.
Before I derail, Josie's a great question, distribution of the sixty versus twenty-five plus the five, which is ninety total. That amount in total is less than we've taken in tax dollars going back before twenty twenty-one. If in the future we have more than ninety thousand, how much additional money would be put?
You know, that, uh, that's a great question. That's really hard to say, because by any given year, we don't know how much money is going, coming in. With the current structure, with the chamber and their role, we give them all the money, you know, we used to give them seventy percent of the lodging tax, now it's fifty. They get all the money to do the full scope of work. Tara and I had this conversation last week in finalizing the, the draft RFP. Company, you know, we have to look at it objectively, you know, we can assume the chamber's going to want to be uh, submitters for this opportunity, but for other organizations out there. They need to have like a whole, a realistic number to structure what they would say it costs to complete the scope of work that we have in the RFP, so. We, you know, conservatively came to, I think Tara came up with sixty, and then, you know, another twenty-five for the second bucket, which you were asking about earlier. I'm calling it second bucket, uh, but Tara, you're asking like visitor touchpoints and. Uh, business engagement, we would need to at some point if we're contracting that out, all procurement policies, maybe do a separate RFP. That would, that's what you were asking about before. So um. I'm just trying to paint a picture on how we, you know, kind of keep to these conservative numbers, but we kind of have to, to help some of these consultants, these contractors. Tell us what it's going to cost to.
What's in you for this, and you do this for this?
Yeah, well, they can go back and say, yeah, you pounce, yeah, like, it's going to be a hundred and ten minimum. But that'll be a good page for us, right?
And presumably, I'll be an annual contractor anyway, so if the numbers change or things look up, then you can just contract through.
Yeah.
Who owns the visitors' site?
Of towns. On that, whatever happened to the, the reconstruction plans?
It's on our five-year plan from last cycle, I'm.
Yeah, and then the chamber actually told us to hold off on that, because the reprioritizing, that, and I think basically. Actually, the investors should answer that, but. That I think basically, actually the investors should answer that, but because they ran us on the show, planning it, they just go choose the best.
Location, yeah, part of it was, they wanted a rebuilding, but they were like, is this location the best location? Because we were talking about that for like busing, for like, where's the best bus drop off place, and then also a place that like, could like a traffic would naturally stop to stop and see a visitor center. That's not a great place to stop to visitor center down there, and so I think it's like, just keep going round and round because of those.
Yeah.
I mean, every conversation I've had, actually, she was wanting to move forward on the bill, but it was. Do you want to pay to get plans drawn up? If the original uh container solution wasn't going to be great. Did they want to draw plans to that site specific, or did the town want to move it to a different site, and what's another?
It would be interesting to see see the statistics of how many people stop in there and how many people are accessing. The website, you know, because. But stopping in there just seems kind of old school, you know, with the display of pamphlets, you know, that you see.
When I think about, we have multiple entry points to town.
Yeah.
Right, so you're coming in from Telluride. I mean, we could pilot it by QR codes on some existing signage, like, could we make them so they're removable and see if people scan? We'll look at that map outside of Colorado by all the time, but they don't quite get what they want, and they usually look really confused. We could add a QR code to that sign, like, that would be, like, those those signs already exist, and that might be a good way to, like, do you want a good road? But now we're getting, we're getting for them, but.
I mean, what I'm picturing is some really punchy, fun looking um, marketing campaign with some posters. Um, that could be hung up in any number of businesses, I mean, we have. Um, you know, many orders of magnitude, more visitors going in, you know, probably the true grit on a given week than in the visitor center currently. So this is kind of the idea of meeting visitors where they are and where we want them to be going. Um, and giving them information that they can carry with them on their phones, not that, you know, paper may may still have a place, but kind of emphasizing that. Um, and and then focusing that twenty five thousand dollar contract on the implementation of that, so getting those, you know. Working with the businesses to place a few kiosks and making sure the staff are trained and how to point people to those, when someone says, where do you go hiking? The staff know to say, you can find all of our maps like right there, just take a picture of that, so that's that's sort of the idea with the um, with that. Visitor interface um contract, that that's our local. Um, you know, person or group who's really holding, going kind of hand in hand with the businesses to be kind of disseminated visitor centers, if you will.
Related to somewhat on topic, do we, does the town have all the parking spaces, so that whole, the dirt parking lot there, is that, is that uptown also?
Yep.
Little parking, as it was evidenced by the Ronald Festival. Um, the uh, buyers markets, the parking is a premium, which way, if that, that space could actually develop into a form of parking. Because it's still within easy walking distance.
Yeah, but when it's warm, like, I walked between the four H Center with the fair and the E V ride and drive, but. People didn't look particularly happy to be doing that walk, I was like, oh, this is.
This is the next, this is the next.
Many times, it's not, it's hot enough to. Like, that's some, that is one of the things that as we think about. Tourism is how do we connect, I think we've had this conversation, that east side of the highway. Um, with some of our lodging. Or not, um, with the town and kind of our business center we want to focus on. Like, that's, that is one of the pieces that we're going to have to think about, and I think that's kind of part of our next item.
All right, so um, are there any questions in the audience, either online or here in the room about this item? And here none, uh, the staff is requesting direction. From us regarding this, this proposed hybrid framework for visitor servicing. Sounds like there's pretty good consensus that we like the proposal is.
I do. Staff time and retention, I appreciate it.
And a lot of reading between the lines, because this has been, this is the culmination of. How many years of conversations and kind of what if, what if, and just like what Preston said is. We might get told that our money is too small, you know, who knows what this is going to, how this is going to come out, but. I think this sits pretty well.
Yeah.
It's a great way for us to do this, Tara.
I think.
Put that together.
Thanks Preston for all the support.
Thank you, Wes. Thank you, all right, enough direction?
Yes.
All right, thanks. That takes us to, which another one for you, right?
The calendar?
No.
Oh, the, oh, yeah, the.
And number ten, present, presentation of Ridgeway Economic Development, you some of the, yeah.
Yeah. I'm trying to make this fairly consistent.
Now, so you're up here.
And then the calendar, this is the Tara show for a little while, um, thank you all, um. So this is a a quick summary of the um, the economic development review that was conducted by Downtown Colorado Inc. Um, in a process that was sponsored by the Colorado Tourism Office. Um, and it was a collaboration between um, the Town of Ridgway, um, the Ridgway Fuse Committee and the Ridgway Chamber of Commerce. The joint area Chamber of Commerce, so I'm, um, they created a, a DCI created a comprehensive. Um, report based on the two workshops that they did in our community, that's in your packet. This is just sort of a high level summary, um, to give you some of the the high points, so. Um, some of you came to these, so you'll you'll be familiar directly, uh, we had two workshops on the twenty second and the twenty seven. We had over thirty participants from a broad cross section of the community, business owners, um, residents, elected officials, volunteers, um. Chamber and town, and we also um worked with, there was a planning group, um, which Mayor Clark was on. It worked with DCI ahead of time, as well as with the Chamber, to offer some context about our community, some of our existing plans. Some of the priorities we already knew that we had, so that they didn't have to start from zero as they were having the conversations with the community. Um, because we've already had a lot of conversations over the last year or so. So and and also a well considered master plan, so we wanted to make sure that they had all of that context before um, starting in. Um, I I love this, because, you know, I think we all share a love of our community, I think that the. They they said, wow, Ridgway's like real strength is its community, that's your biggest asset. And I, so I really loved seeing that, want to make sure you you saw that, and they they said, not only is your your biggest strength, but we encourage you to continue to lean into it, to. Continue to increase collaboration clarity, um, and supportive, supporting partnerships. Around your shared values and supporting sustainable tourism. Um, so we had two workshops, one was in person in the Decker Community Room, the next one was on Zoom. So on the first one, we um, did a review of some of the challenges with input from the, from those who were assembled at the meeting. Um, and had some really great dialogue, and DCI captured those themes. Um, they use this framework of these six different kinds of capitals, which was novel to some of us. Um, kind of in learning curve, I think, but they think in terms of human capital, social capital, financial capital, regulations. Culture, like the culture of your community, not necessarily cultural programming, but how do you function together, and then education and training of your people. So they made the recommendations, and they had us think in terms of these frameworks. So in our second session, we did, we did Zoom breakout sessions, and at that point, we were identifying, um, we were more in the space of identifying solutions and strategies. And so here are the uh, recommendations, these are like very high point summary language, um, you can read the much more detailed version in the report. Uh, but they they shared the the um, recommendations based on those six lenses, so I'll share them like that, too. So the high, kind of the headline around education and training was the recommendation was to improve access and awareness of local job training resources. I don't really need to read that out loud to you, like. Uh, and then here were some short term and long term training and education, um, suggestions that they have. One of the ones that I want to just highlight for you that I thought was really interesting was, that didn't totally fit under education and training in my mind. But that's where it got, that's where it got put, was assessing our lodging capacity, so they said it's really low hanging fruit for you to know how many beds do you have. So that if you want to host an event, do you have capacity for five hundred people or a hundred and fifty people, like, we don't even really know. So um, that was, I thought it, an intriguing suggestion, as well as other kinds of training for businesses and.
So that is interesting, and I was reading, I think, in The Plain Dealer somewhere recently, that um. The Ridgway Mountain Lodge, like workforce housing for the four seasons, it's going in in Tyrra. And I didn't know if that meant the whole thing or part of it, but I just read that this past week somewhere.
I was going to bring this at the end of the meeting, Preston and I did get some more better data sheets today, but I'll send to you, we can. So we like that info.
Yeah, something to bring up later.
Yeah.
Good question.
Yep. Um, human capital being, you know, the this, the capacities of the people in your community, that's our most important asset. Um, and, you know, these are things that we're already doing, right? Childcare and housing, that's been, those have been priorities for the Town of Ridgway for a long time now, and I think we've made incredible strides, and then workforce stability. There are some of the short and long term priorities that were suggested. Uh, we had a, had a presentation about down payment assistance just this morning, or just this evening, so I think we are in good um. Good place with a lot of these, and we're moving forward on some of them, I would let you know that the Ridgway Fuse um. Created Main Street Program is also studying this and integrating, um, has already integrated some of these ideas as the strategic plan, you'll hear from. Um, that group next month. Um, so aligning business hours for workforce stability is one of the, the actions that, one of their roles. Um, social capital, so that's really about how well we work together, our connections. Um, just improving our coordination regionally and locally. This, the idea of the hourway bus getting into downtown, kind of to your point, Council Lincoln around trying to bridge that gap, um. Came up as a recommendation. And again, you'll see some short term and long term goals, um, the short term, one short term, one being our centralized event meeting calendar, which you'll hear about soon. Um. And the importance of business to business um, support, I think in that merchant services coordinator, that's kind of what we're thinking about when, uh, with the contract that you just reviewed. Um, and being able to, um, I think, engage some of the people who have knowledge about, um, the. The real estate that's available, to have a better kind of proactive approach to helping to match up, you know. Properties with potential uses and being, um, working with our realtors to kind of get more involved in that, is how I went about. I won't bore you with every single one, um, building a collaborative culture, um, especially supporting some of our mission driven nonprofits. Active at Clinton Street, John spoke about that earlier, I think we saw a great example of that, um, with Matthew's event on. And some of the other events that have been going on this summer, and and will continue to go on at Clinton Street. So I think there's a lot of community energy around, um, helping that street really come alive, um, and and we do festivals well here. And small, small festivals, so the recommendation was to look for ways to expand those, especially on the shoulder seasons. Um, this was an interesting one to me, because it seemed like also low hanging fruit, um, making it a little bit more clear and easy to access for. Business community and what our regulations are, um, thinking of just like maybe some very simple one pagers that people can can have, or 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 brief. Um, kind of well designed handouts that can say, hey, you're a new business, here are the, here's the people you need to contact, here are the main regulations you need to be aware of. Uh, so I thought that was interesting. Suggestion. Rent stabilization, commercial space incentives is something I think was, has come up, but it's not anything we have in the strategies around right now. Um, we're going to some other longer term business. Um. Helping to, helping to match investors um, with potential business opportunities was something that came up. We have Preston. Um, we do already have, they were big on mini grants, those are things they recommend it highly, and we do have already. Um, a couple of different town sponsored grant programs in place, so I felt like we were doing well there. A shop local campaign was also recommended, um, a longer term thing that everybody acknowledged, I think, was probably not that realistic. The immediate term for us, like at a downtown development authority or some other kind of taxing. Um, entity for our downtowns, that, they they said you would be by far the smallest community that would have ever done that, so I took that to mean that may not be for this at this point, but. Um, other people basically. So big things that they looked at, um, that they said were our top things, that this is kind of a repeat, getting that lodging data. Um, merchant services in coordinating, um, with real, realtors and real estate. Locations.
In the business to business, uh, I know there were some social media ideas and things, but this means that ever take off.
I know the Chamber has, and the Chamber members can speak better to this than I can, but I I know started at least a business to business Facebook page for, for, um. Any businesses in the community. And then medium priority, um, a tourism advisory committee and an economic develop, economic vitality committee. Um, I think Preston and I are both cautious around the potential of death by committee, so we want to be careful around adding committees, um, unless they have a really, really clear scope of work. Um, but that, but it is, it is clear that those are functions that don't exist currently. Um, they, maybe they could be rolled into the fuse committee or something else, but I think that's something that would be worth considering and talking about. And then lastly, um, investor matchmaking coordinator, um, helping to kind of. Work with businesses who need investment and local people who have money to invest and helping make those matches. They put this as a low priority, I'm not sure, I know there are people in the community who are kind of eager to get this going and maybe take some leadership in this. Um, I think they were saying, you know, it takes a lot, and you may, you have to have good networks, going back to our strength as community. Uh, community being our biggest strength, like, I actually think, my personal opinion, which may be very wrong, is that. There might be um, some volunteers who might be willing to help, pull together some conversations to get started on something like this, but it's probably a lot to learn. And.
Thanks, Tara. It's amazing, uh, questions for Tara on this?
I was really struck by the lodging capacity piece, it called back to our discussions we were having around the film fest. And we've started talking about maybe really trying to grab some occupancy data, not just how many beds do we have? But how often are those beds filled? Um, I know I talked a lot about this last year during budget season. I still think we should be thinking about some Airbnb monitoring and data collection, not just being punitive, but. You know, we need to know, if they're occupied all the time, then, you know, that's one thing, but if we're at thirty percent occupancy, that's another, um. It would just also be nice to someone who's right now telling people to book lodging in Ridgway to know that they're legit. Um, and and there's really just not a way to tell.
Yes, good point. Their comments? Running, I have some questions for Tara on this. We're on Zoom, we're here in our own. It was a good effort, I think we got some great um, ideas out of it, now we have to. Uh, move forward, right?
Yeah, and when we, when the fuse committee comes next month to present their strategic plan, I'll try to remember to sort of circle back and highlight. What of this plan kind of landed in, in the few strategic plans, so you can see the areas we're making some steps on and the areas where we don't have the capacity to at this point.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I wonder if working uh, just under social capital, um, I wonder if working with. Smart, our way, and any other regional.
Transit.
Thank you, transit, my brain is doing very well. Uh. To bring visitors downtown persons, and I I understand we've had issues with where they can turn around, getting back from highway, turning, all these things. But I do want to just boost our local economy, and I think that having our bus stops so far out of town is not, um. The most.
It's not ideal.
Yeah.
But it's.
And I, I would mention it a little bit earlier, probably when we were talking Billy Creek stuff, but Colorado really is. There's some C dot money out there for creating places where people can switch between moves and transportation. And I, I think that is a huge thing that Ridgway needs to consider is exactly that, how do we get those buses here where people are at? Um, it kind of goes to some of the discussions that we've had lately about no idling, because if you don't have to start your car to drive. To get on the bus to go to Telluride, you're a whole lot more likely to get on the bus. Um, so I think, I I think it really is a. Like, going back to our discussion, how do we wait? Things where our businesses on the east side of the highway are hugely important, part of our picture, would kind of bring the center back to the center.
Yeah. I completely agree. Yeah.
Anything else? Anything else? All right. Sorry, go ahead, Anna, I didn't see your hand up.
Sarah, can we elaborate a little bit on people capital, uh, points where.
I would have a plan to approach that. Yeah, I, I think that was one of the ones that stood out to me as really the people we build up red, I guess. Um, employers, I think are, because we have such scarcity of staff. My sense, to say anecdotally, is that employers are paying the maximum they can afford. To be able to, because it takes a lot to make anything here, so I. I don't know what that one was really living at, and maybe asking people to, you know, bump up to a living wage, but I, I, my sense of the art. But I don't know that that should be a good observation.
Yeah, I ask, it varies so much.
Good point.
There is year by year, especially.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate you asking that, I think a lot of these recommendations are aspirational, there's, you know, and they need to be filtered through. The, you know, the town council's set of priorities on our national plan to really, you know, in consultation with. Businesses and other stakeholders to really see what's realistic for us, so it's just sort of something to consider. Certainly not something that like, there's any marching orders, which is sort of a plan that you can.
So, so I was at these meetings with Tara and a few others, and one of the things that we had asked them for, I believe they were getting to us, was. They brought a couple comparative communities that they thought were closer to us, and we sort of disagreed, and we had asked them to maybe look at um. What is it, Carbondale? Maybe do like a, an analysis of how Carbondale is doing it, because there's sort of a better community for Aspen, but that's some of the same struggles as us. Because like a lot of these recommendations, they were recommendations from DCI, who comes from Denver, a lot more resources, bigger communities. And I can't remember what all the communities they brought as, as comparisons, but we wanted something that was a little, seem a little bit more aligned with Ridgeway. And so hopefully they get that back to us, that's something they can bring to town council and have more discussions about. That seems like the town like Carbondale would be a little more aligned with the challenges we're facing specifically in terms of. Needing to keep our local businesses going, but also sort of being a bedroom community in terms of lack of housing and hotels and whatever, because. People are staying with us instead of paying to stay until they're either URA. So hopefully they get us that Carbondale and same, I think, I think on every other things that they were working on, so.
I appreciate that reminder, I can follow up.
Yeah, because that would have been, that'd be helpful for us. And Andy, my, my take was. All of those priorities that Tara talked about at the end, those, those kind of five main points. Were all pulled from those various strategies, and that one didn't get identified as a top priority for Ridgway. Um, because I noticed a lot of these were like, you know, some of the pieces around working for workforce housing. And do we all wish we could do more? Yes, but I didn't take that it is like, you are failing. Like that was kind of the blanket thing is we need to make sure we have workers, you know, the communities all over Colorado. Need that and, uh, you know, everyone up here wants that. So that was, that was kind of my take is, oh yeah, it's something to think about, but it's not our biggest bang for our buck, that's, yeah.
And to me, I, I talked on that, some of those top priorities affirming, I'm like, yeah.
Yeah.
Working on a workforce helping and childcare.
Totally.
And the aspirational aspect is really important, and if you don't have aspirations, where, where are you going? We're, we always as a small town have to have our eye on, on bigger issues and bigger solutions, and they may seem like they're not solvable, but. If you don't try, you don't start thinking about them, breaking them down. You're never gonna do it, so I think that this is one of those kind of things. Anyone else? Okay, thanks again, that's great, let's stay up here for the next one too.
I'm going to invite up a couple.
Okay. Kaylee, come on up, presentation sheet and requested directional proposal for a shared countywide community development. The best.
Back to say I'm really jazzed about this. Um, so I'm really jazzed about it, yeah, I feel, I, I, I know I shouldn't be trying to be neutral, but this has been a really fun project. And I think what's been most enjoyable about it is getting to work with Kaylee and with John and previously Ashley at the Chamber in a collaborative effort. Um, to try and address a longstanding need that our community has had, which is for a calendar where we can say. One place where we can go and find out what's happening in the community, whether it's a little league game, a public meeting, or a concert, or an art. For, you know, art exhibition, we want to have one place, and yeah.
And if I could just add to that, as somebody who's been involved with it up and below, Arts Alliance for, since its founding. Worked with Ashley on, actually, Ashley King Graham Lee, the architect of Terrence now. For more than a decade on trying to address this, seeing all the problems, trying to figure it out, I mean, to see Ashley's letter in this was just like. I, my first question is, what's Ashley gonna say, gives him all the effort she's put in, just by herself along with all the other players? And so I, I'm, I'm as excited as you, I think it's really incredible.
Awesome, thank you, Mayor.
Take it away.
Thank you, I want to introduce some, or allow them to introduce themselves, Kaylee and John.
Hi, fellow, fellow council members, my name is Kaylee Rotten, I'm the Tourism and Destination Marketing Director for the city of URA.
Welcome, Kaylee.
Thank you.
Oh, again, we have John Hill here, uh, to represent the Chamber with our contract with Town Bridgeway. I've enjoyed working with, with these ladies and getting to see this project, so it's.
Another big calendar play, definitely.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, so I'm going to share a little bit of the background of how we got here, and I'm going to turn it over to Kaylee and John to talk about where we propose to go with this. Um, and then we also have a budget recommendation for you at the end. You have a very detailed um, report in your, in your packet, you choose to go into the details, we enjoyed putting together all of the story of, of the background of the calendar. Um, but like, like we've acknowledged, there have been a lot of efforts over the years to try and create a calendar. We want to acknowledge um, Council Lynn Paget, who in her personal capacity spent about ten years um, developing and managing. A URA community calendar, um, that she did entirely as a volunteer and donating her time and her money to do it. Um, and then Ashley King Graham Lee took the helm from there, trying to create something that was more um, integrated. Um, and had some automation to it, um, both of those had their strengths and also their challenges. Go on, go ahead, Preston. Oh, and I'm sorry, Preston, this is the slideshow that Kaylee sent you? Or is it this, um, she just emailed you us these same slides as a link, because we have a little video. Oh, she just. Okay, no problem, we'll just, we'll just do without it, it's fine, we, we, um, we realized that the PDF didn't have some of the links that we wanted to share with you. So that's why, we just realized that when we sat down that, that the PDF didn't have some of the links, I think we'll all be fine, we can. We can share it later, yeah, we can follow, yeah, yeah, I, I know you have a lot of other things on your agenda, so it'll be, it'll save us a little. So here's our team as we already discussed. Um, we discussed a bit about the need, um, it was really great to be able to collaborate with them almost, because we could look at where, do we, do we just think we have a need, or do we really have any? And, and URA, um, through their destination marketing program, actually conducted a survey. Um, and had a hundred and twenty respondents, um, and asked specifically. If they would see value in having a community wide calendar, um, that incorporated events from Ridgway and URA. And on a scale of one to five, the average um, was four, um, in terms of the level of importance that they gave that, so we thought that that was important. Um, as we've spoken about, Ashley King Rambley has also worked with us as a stakeholder and is very supportive of this effort, wrote a letter of support. Um, and also, um, during Ridgway's process and the um, business roundtables that the Chamber has facilitated. A community calendars come up repeatedly as a theme, so we feel like we've got a solid need established. Um, so in some of the past efforts, we interviewed people who had been doing the calendars of the past. The main themes that came up that had gotten in the way of those calendars being widely adopted and sustainable were several, one was. They were dependent on either volunteer labor or the labor of somebody who already had a full time job who was doing this on their Sunday mornings. So kind of volunteer labor, um, and didn't necessarily have enough funding to make them sustainable. Um, and then also running a community calendar in a very active community like ours, there's so much going on. It's really difficult to make sure you get enough on the calendar to where people trust that it's complete. And so both Lynn and Ashley described kind of going hunting for, for events, you know, when they had time, they would. You know, search websites of people and groups they knew did events frequently, or go by word of mouth, something they'd heard of. Trying to get that on the calendar, the Chamber this, um, last year has really approved upon that model. You with their Joomla, um, platform by having things, uh, a user form that people can just fill out. And they can just press approve, so we wanted to replicate that, uh, we also wanted to, to, uh. We really liked the aesthetics of the Chamber site, we thought that the pictures and the way it was laid out was, looked really nice, as opposed to like a Google Calendar that's all cluttered. So we were trying to kind of emulate both of those success pieces while also trying to solve some of the problems around. Um, just the intensity of staff time. So. So we, I think I've already described the vision, we can skip this one. Uh, let's see, so I'm gonna turn it over to Kaylee now, who's gonna take us from here, where, where we like to go.
Thank you, Tara, so where to start? We were no, knowing going into this, there's so many platforms and opportunities and programs out there for us to be able to utilize. But what were our key goals and objectives out of what we thought were priorities when choosing a platform or program for this calendar? So up here, we have our seven key essential needs for calendars. So something that's centralized, meaning that it's a shareable calendar. It could be embedded on multiple websites, whether it's a hotel, you're looking to link directly back. Or have their own page that's a replica of what we have. We wanted it to be easy, so making sure that there was unlimited abilities for events, administrators, users. It was the ability to have repeat information, so council meetings, we can have it easily repeatable. Instead of having to go in and manually do every single one per the year. Something that's shareable, so the ability to have the built in communication tools, newsletters, social media shares. Something that's filterable, so if people are looking for just Ridgway, just URA, maybe it's, I just am interested in the arts. Maybe I'm just interested in music, we can uh, add that filter. Something that's sustainable, so something that's cost effective, something that's easily trainable. So if there is staff turnover and administration additions or takeaways. It's something that you're not starting all over again, or having to do a whole new process. It's something easy and that's understandable to be able to move forward with year after year, no matter who is here. Obviously, something that's beautiful, visually appealing, legible, readable. And last, of course, ADA compliant, to make sure we're up to code with the state standards. So some of these platforms, we researched many, we researched, I believe, seven or eight. And these platforms just didn't quite meet the criteria of the seven that we just discussed. So Joomla with Daniel, he did mention that with what we were after, it just wasn't something that he was able to do or custom build. For Word, WordPress with aggregate plugins, it required us to essentially be a coder, and none of us are coders. Like, that's not what we want to do either. Events and Unibet, the aesthetics weren't up to par, and then Calendar Wiz was just, it was limited with users, admins. And then the marketing abilities, so then we took all this information and we nailed it down to our top three candidates. So the first, or I should say our third place was timely. The thing that we loved most was the price, it was only a yearly fee of about fifteen hundred dollars. But huge limitations with them, so we could only have up to a thousand events a year. We could only have, I believe, two users. Um, neither, I believe, ten users, which mean like. The sure, the right, like, they're each one user, and so if multiple businesses are doing events, we can't do that, so that's a huge red flag. As well as the amount of admin users that are allowed onto the platform. So the next one that came in second place, that's what timely would look like, um, as an example, and then move forward. So Venture Web, uh, we reached out to Telluride because we did really appreciate how Telluride's events page looked, felt. And operated, so Venture Web, um, is a custom build option, so it's a one time fee. Of that twenty two to thirty eight thousand dollars, um, depending on what it is that we're actually wanting to create with this calendar. So with all the shareability, the embed codes, the filters, it's probably going to be more on that like thirty to thirty eight side of things. Um, just with that alone, like, man, it's just, it's pretty, it's pretty costly, and it would be a really long term. Um, like trying to get back the money that we spent. So I'm gonna turn it over to John, actually, to go to the next one, you can see Telluride's, but John's gonna do the number one reveal here. Drop roll.
So, coming in at the end of this project, I was able to get caught up to the speed based on what Ashley had done. Localists, um, met all the criteria, so like. What Kylie was saying with the centralized, easy, shareable, filterable, sustainable, beautiful, ADA compliant. We have a grid that I believe is there a link to it in here? That's what it was, so it's basically a, a matrix comparing the top three and all of these criteria. And localist on a scale of zero to five, far and away, it got five on every one of these stated criteria. The others, they might have had a couple of fives, but mostly ones or twos, so it wasn't even close in terms of this criteria. But the event thing was, the unlimited events is, as they said, is a big deal, unlimited filters. Feed and bulk import available, uh, the campaigns, that, that's also important to this group. Um, I love the idea of the SMS texting, nobody else had that. Um, so that gives a real sort of a geo fencing capability for the events.
So is that, sorry, is that like, as I say, I want to know when all the baseball games are, could I just only send up for SMS reminders of baseball games? Or do you get SMS reminders of every event?
If, if we said that, well, two, two answers, I think my layperson's understanding is yes, if you said that filter, for like sports events.
I think that'd be really important, if you want to like only know like live music events, you want to know sporting events, like, you know. You don't want to get inundated with texts, that'd be super cool if you could say, well, I'm really interested in like when the bike rides are, I'm into it when the. Sure, no shows are, you know.
Or click on a specific event and ask for the reminders for that, you know.
That's what I was asking, if that's a capability.
Yeah, yeah, not even a category, just an event.
Yeah, they're actually on the line if we want to dive in, uh.
It's okay, I'm curious.
Yeah, our, our localist representative is joined on Zoom, so if you wanted to ask some of those technical questions, that's why she's here, Miss Cassie. Um, and she actually prepared a really lovely five minute video that could show the capacity, the capability, but we didn't realize that that link didn't go through. So we'll have to send that as a hub.
Cause you hear her scream.
I was curious about the cost recovery options, what is, I don't know what that.
So the cost recovery options, and to me, that's the most exciting thing, because as we three entities. Uh, look at the cost of this, and if we divide the cost amongst ourselves, it allows a more robust platform. And in my mind, one of, if not the most important things, because of the shareability and the integration. Cost recovery options could, could mean sponsorships, it could mean advertising. Uh, because we can share, we can embed, we can interact with other businesses. That allows us more eyeballs, more value from an advertising sponsorship standpoint, is, is the way that I've. Got excited over that feature, uh, so cost recovery options are more broad with. Uh, localist than the other platforms that we looked at, from my perspective and what, what I've seen. Um, and, and again, on the con, it, it would be the most costly. It, it could be, but then with some effort, that cost can be mitigated through ads and sponsorships and. And because we, we proactively share it and try to get others to embed and, and share it with their people, their communities. Their customers, um, to me, that just allows a more broad sweep of, of the effort.
Wouldn't this also be a place that they could like access some of these videos that you've talked about and shown and stuff, that it all is kind of linked, you know?
Which.
From most of the video, the, the one that Tara did, the one that you just showed. Calendar, that's.
Yeah, I think, um, then, then this is something we still need to hammer out, depending on who our contractor is and that kind of stuff. But I think my, my vision is that this calendar would be, um, would have its own landing page, but it would also be embedded in our destination marketing page. Which would have other videos and that kind of stuff as well. Yeah, and then, and then on our destination marketing page, it may just have the Ridgway events filtered, but then you could also, um, quickly access both. Um, the whole county events, um, sort of in a seamless way.
Quick, a quick question, the closest thing to this that I'm aware of right now, I was reminded of this, because usually in this meeting, we see. Looking, plain deal, it comes out, this, this month, they had an entire page to calendar events, have you had any discussions with them regarding how this. Associate or in base?
We haven't yet, um, but we have spoken about it in our. We haven't yet, um, but we have spoken about it in our team. Uh, we definitely recognize that that's part of an offering that they have as their business. Um, and we would like to have a conversation with them, we wanted to have a conversation with you first. Um, but we, but we thought it would, you know, the idea of it being shareable, it would be very, you know, this is just our, the, the, the working group sense. Is that there would be no reason not to share this literally and that the plane dealer could, could maybe save some of their time or their hardworking reporters and editors. To be able to share this calendar, um, and would be free to publish it. Right, you have to have a subscription and, and so, and so, and you know, not knowing the, you know, kind of the ins and outs of that, there is a sense that this would be shared freely with anybody who wanted to use it.
I get it. And they could advertise on it.
You can advertise that.
I, I was looking at the sample site and I was, I had a question about why the shuttle, I mean, I love our way. But it, it's not an event, and I think that's one of the things that we have to be really aware of, is that we don't, like unless it's like, these are the shuttle times.
You pulled up the, the.
Yeah, I was just like, sometimes I've, I've run, it's not necessarily on our calendars in the area, but things that. Are like ongoing, that aren't really an event.
Yeah.
Like, there is, there is a playground in the park. I'm like, I don't think, so that's one of the things.
Twenty-four seven, sixty-five.
You know, I, I would just suggest is that the things that go on here really are like an, a happening.
So the, the way that will be managed is that we will have, um, each municipality will have an administrator. Um, so what we, what we propose is that, um, you know, if we, if we like moving forward with this, that we'll have an ongoing working group. With a representative from each municipality, the county was like, you guys are good, you've got it. Um, and you know, they're, they're welcome to have an administrator as well, but they, it seemed as though that wasn't, um, maybe something they had the capacity for. But, um, and that the adminis-, so if somebody were to submit an event, the administrator would be able to look at that and be like, is this actually an event or is this just this ongoing thing? Um, one of the, the strengths and that, and, um, Cassie built that for us just as a test, right? But one of the strengths of this is that you can, and why I did that on there, is that you can link it to any organization that has an ongoing events calendar. So let's use the Sherbino for example, or the Wright Opera House, they have like an RSS feed on their websites. If they, instead of them having to take the staff time to enter all of their things into this event calendar, we can actually just, or the schools or anything, we can put the RSS, like the link. And it will automatically load into this calendar, saving massive amounts of staff time. Uh, but then it does require a little review, because if that came off of a website that had that in their RSS feed, then we would just have to have humanized to review and say, oh, actually, that's not it. And that, that's a ongoing thing.
And then I assume when we talk about things being shareable, that this would have been like a public access, you know, when you can have the link that you could tap it into your calendar and you can turn that off and on. So I don't actually have to go, if I live here, I don't actually have to go to the website. I would personally just import it and turn it off and on, so when I'm bored and like looking for a thing to do, I'm like, cool, I can just subscribe.
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
I kind of wanna tap Cassie, if you feel like you have time, um, she, like I said, she developed this really great video, she's not gonna get a chance to share it. Um, we will send it to you, um, Cassie, if you're there, just kind of wonder if you might like to just, um, maybe respond to any of the questions that you heard or, um, offer any, um, details that we might not have covered.
Hi, yes, nice to meet you all and thank you so much for having me, it's been very, very fun to work with Tara and Kaylee and Ash and now John and, uh, very happy to be here, so thank you so much for your time. Um, yeah, I'm happy to share my screen if anyone has specific questions about what event reminders look like or surveys or kind of how the calendar functions. But I think it'll be really helpful to, um, centralize, like Tara is saying, you can pull events, for example, from the Sherbino and we actually have them on your test calendar as an example. You can also do it the opposite way, for example, the museum doesn't have a calendar, so if you want it, you could populate, um, a series of events on the museum website, just using. An embed code that we will teach you how to generate, and I'm not a very techie person, I'm a former sixth grade ESL teacher and I know how to do it, so I always say that anyone can do it. Um, but yeah, it's a really easy to use, easy to, to learn platform, and we're really, really excited to boost engagement and, and centralize all of your, your events for, for the county. So, um, yeah, happy to answer any specific questions you all might have.
Um, what about my question about when they can do SMS like reminder alerts, is it sortable by, by genre, by if you want? Is that an option we'd be able to turn on, like if I only wanna get updates about whatever it is happening, or is I only have updates about baseball games, I need updates about live music events, you know, is it sortable? What sort of SMS reminders you would get?
Yes, it is, so there's two different ways that that could happen. One would be you filter events, for example, maybe you wanna receive event reminders for all family-friendly events that are happening across, um, just in Ridgway. Cause you don't, you don't, you're not as interested in the ones in Yuray, for example. You could receive thematic reminders in that kind of way. The other way that texting and SMS works is if you mark yourself as interested, or if you RSVP to an event on the platform. Cause we have built-in RSVP capabilities and ticketing, um, types of tickets, et cetera. You can receive a, an event reminder via text for a specific event. So if you RSVP for happy hour, um, for next Friday, you'll receive a text, usually it's the day before, um, as a reminder, but that's all custom. So you can choose what you want the reminders to look like.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Like, definitely occurs to me based on your comments about baseball, how would it be possible for the school to?
That's what I was thinking of.
Schools to?
Yeah.
Uh, link their calendars with their soccer, baseball and.
Yeah, Cassie actually did an analysis, we, we told her, these are all the calendars we think we would want to have integrated in here, building school, um, um, town, county. All the event places, and she went through and said, these are the ones that would work. Um, and so, and the schools all work because they have an RSS feed, yeah, libraries.
Yeah, it's true, I just had them, and put my middle schoolers games and things, and just to get more community members to know, like, hey, there's a, you know, baseball, baseball game or basketball game or volleyball game or whatever going on, come support the kids, like. I think it just like opened up a lot more knowledge about what's going on, I'm really excited about the school ideas.
Well, and once the doug board could update their system to have that be.
Yeah, because RSS is so standard.
Yeah, exactly.
I think it would be a privilege to do it if this existed, so.
There would be a strong incentive, I agree, like the rat trails, their, their site is compatible, even though they're volunteer run organization.
Yeah.
So it's very doable and, and easily done.
Maybe, maybe I missed this, but, um, would there be a way for individuals to add events or at least the administrators would, would get to prove them that as the chambers website works now?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Very cool.
I'm excited.
This is cool.
I'm kind of.
So one, so one additional, um, item that I'll say, I know you all were talking about. Just having events on this calendar, which we also encourage it to be events instead of like, hey, there's a playground or the bus comes through here, you know, frequently. Um, you can have announcements on your calendar if you'd like, they obviously have to have an end date tied to them, but you're also welcome to use it, um, in other fashion. So, yeah, very excited for, for your community and excited to be part of it, so thank you so much again for having me and I'm always available for more questions if you have additional ideas or, uh, concerns.
Does anybody else have questions or is it Catherine?
Cassie.
Um, either here in the room or on Zoom. Erin, thanks for your time, thanks for being here.
Do you wanna watch that video, Cassie?
They can email it to us and we can help as well.
I don't care.
I can make sure it gets emailed to you all.
Yeah, I just wanna be sure the time is not wasted.
I, I think we covered most everything, it's a five-minute video that covers a lot of what we talked about, but it has a nice visual to it. And we'll say that we also, um, spoke to a couple of different communities that use this platform, uh, localist put us in touch with some of their customers, and they were all very happy with the results. They said it had been really smooth, they'd switched from other platforms that were much more difficult and buggy all the time and that they had had, that there was a lot of setup to make sure you got all the right categories and everything dialed in. But after that point, it was very usable and smooth for them, so that was reassuring. Um, so the proposal that we have is to split this class equally three ways between the city of Yuray, the town of Ridgway and, um, Yuray County. Um, the same team has spoken to those other two entities, you're our last presentation. Um, and so the, the, the request, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time, would be to consider including this in the twenty-twenty-six, um, budget. Um, and we would be able to work with localists, they're willing to get creative with us on getting started before then, um, doing maybe a very, very low-cost contract. They, you know, like, maybe we could do a contract for a dollar, just so that we could get started on the onboarding and the training, so that we can kind of hit the ground running in twenty-twenty-six. So I don't know that we'll do exactly that, but they were willing to be flexible, um, and so we could kind of get a jumpstart on the year.
Did you get responses from those other entities?
Um, yeah, they were all very supportive, um, it was a very similar conversation with everyone and they all felt that this had been a long time coming. Um, I think the, the county has less lodging taxes than the other two entities, and so, um, that was a conversation, there was, they had some curiosity. Um, Marathon had some curiosity just about security and then user agreements, some detailed technical questions that Cassie has, has pulled for us and I can share, is it FAQ she put together? And I think there was, there were some other detailed questions around what would happen if somebody did an event that was not legitimate. You know, would we be liable if something weird happened with that event? And some kind of, I, I think that there was a sense for most people that that wasn't a concern, um, but we could, you know, we, we had some recommendations around maybe putting some old harmless type of agreements in place. And, and then the thought was that this could be integrated and potentially into the standing intergovernmental agreement that exists between the three entities.
I think it's awesome, and I think five thousand dollars an entity will reward the rewards of good work, people going out to support every other event in our county, community, town, whatever. And, and I think it helps our business owners who are struggling to promote their stuff, I mean, this one we're talking about are, are chamber in our town and as a whole, trying to support our small businesses that are struggling. If they can say, hey, we're having a ribbon-cutting ceremony, hey, we're doing like mass, um, block party, like if they, if they could put those events out there for free on this community website, I mean, I think there's nothing but awesome about it.
Completely agree. So I think it would bring good return on investment.
For our community, be great.
Preston, um. I'd give Mary a hundred percent consensus that if, before we did this, um, what's your take on next steps from a district staff perspective?
Uh, I think as part of the budget process, we, uh, we'll call it out during the budget cycle, but we'll plan accordingly to have the town's proportion of share included in the budget. Or, or like deployment in twenty-twenty-six.
Is there anything we can do to kind of help them get started on some of the fall twenty-twenty-five items on the timeline here?
Fall twenty-twenty-five, which one's that?
Right now, like that's one.
Like contracting.
Yeah, I just.
We could try to launch it by the first of next year or whatever.
Well, the, the timeline calls for launching quarter two of twenty-six, um, but it talks about getting. In a go of agreement, formalized, um, developing detailed policies, you know, getting, getting started on the calendar working group, um. Do we have to wait for the budget to do that or can we?
I mean, we do need a contract in place and we need, you know, the participating, uh, entities, so that the government jurisdictions and whoever else is participating to buy in. We do need those formalities in place, I mean, we can look into see, look at ways to get ahead in the fall months, but.
Yeah.
We do need those formalities in place before.
Yeah, I mean, they're implementation timeline. Yeah, their, their implementation timeline says winter formalized contract, so.
I think, in other words, you, what you're hearing from us is that town Ridgway is supportive, um, you guys heard the working group at this point, they, I don't know.
I don't know.
Drafting contracts and. I think you're hearing that the town council wants to support this and probably don't have much question, so.
And I, I think what John was trying to ask is if something comes up or there is an opportunity to make something happen and jumpstart, we need to fund it, like what is now?
Just, I don't, I don't anticipate there will be any costs incurred, um, before the next fiscal year, that's significant beyond just our existing staff.
Yeah.
Um, and so I can, I can take Preston's lead, um, and we can take the town administrators, even the other entities on, on how best to formalize contracts, et cetera.
Perfect.
Awesome. Thank you all so much for your support, it's really meant a lot to be doing this collaboratively.
Thank you. Another item on the somebody should do this list, cross-done. Next is affordable housing.
All right, that takes us to.
Biosolids.
Yes, solid, much more sexy, I mean, somewhere coming up next. Request for authorization of staff to expend budgeted funds and enter into a agreement for biosolid services.
Sounded like a good deal.
Talked to the disparate quotes here, I was just floored.
That's.
Thing I'd like to, you all are asked to consider authorizing staff to spend, uh, budgeted funds and entering into a contract for, uh, biosolid removal services. Biosol is a fancy way of saying that no sludge, um, at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, there's information in the staff report about the wastewater lagoons that we have as part of our system. Um, the need to have biosolids removed and what that process entails, it's definitely not a frequent event and it's definitely time for us to address what we have in our lagoon system. Um, so again, funds were made available in this year's sewer fund for these services and staff is recommending that, uh, the town proceed with. A company called Terra Genesis, uh, based on the quote we received from them, they quoted the work at a cost of seventeen cents per gallon compared to the eighty-three cents per gallon we received from another company called Denali. Um, Terra Genesis isn't capping the amount of gallons like Denali is, so we'll be able to address more sections of the wastewater ponds, the lagoons, uh, than we initially thought and at a lower cost. So in Terra Genesis, uh, Genesis's proposal, they identified that they're planning to transport the biosolids to the Delta Conference facility. Rather than, uh, you know, spreading and utilizing those, uh, biosolids on a privately on parcel or something like that, which is sometimes an alternative, alternative with these companies propose. So that's where the biosolids go.
I think that's great.
Yeah. Why was it so different? Why was the cost so different?
You have justice, isn't it?
Well, support, I just didn't know if there was like a, we do this, but we don't do.
Or maybe Denali is mobilizing from further away, so their transportation costs are higher, I mean, who knows? I think that's very, it's a very different.
Before that for a month, are there any questions here in the room, Tom, Randy, or on Zoom about this? If not, so, so, I mean.
I move to approve the deviation from procurement procedures. Waive the formal request for bid process for acquisition of services and authorize staff to enter into a contract for biosolid removal services with. Terra Genesis LLC at a price not to exceed budgeted amount.
Second.
All right, motion been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
You host. As you said, thank you. That takes us to. I remember thirteen, review an external license agreement between Wolfland Company LP and the town of Ridgway. Very comprehensive. Yeah, packet here describing all this.
It's very thorough, thorough document.
Yes, it is.
So I'll give a, just a brief overview, so, uh, to make sure everyone understands this is a temporary license agreement that staff negotiated. Uh, between the town and Wolfland Company and it would allow the town to, uh, number one, construct temporary improvements to the access road that's owned by Wolfland Company. And the town has traditionally used to access the neighbor peak, uh, diversion for, uh, a really long time. Um, and number two, the agreement would allow us the ability to use the road for the duration of the construction project. Uh, so it includes all, you know, pre-standard provisions for the term, conditions of use, um, and maintenance and restoration obligations, so. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
It's just the existing road that we've been using, right, just making it for the construction traffic?
Correct, we need to, we need to make, and actually Meridian is out there now making the, uh, agree upon improvements to the access road so that their large machinery and trucks can actually get to the diversion site.
That's it, yeah, just making sure I understood.
Any other comments or questions? Some, okay.
Is this just, I move to approve or direct staff?
Anybody in the audience have any questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions?
I move to approve the license agreement, uh, with Wolf Cattle Company and the town of Ridgeway as presented. Second.
All right, motion made in second. All favor? You both. Thank you. That takes us to ratification of support letter for conveyance of Full Moon Dam and Crystal Resort to the city of Colorado. That's something that, um, I was talking to Senator Bennett's people about and then uh, discovered that, um, you're a city administrator, Michelle Latier had put together a really comprehensive uh, draft and, um, they were prepared to actually turn this letter to both, um, our senators, Senator Cooper and Senator Bennett, as well as Representative Kerr. So obviously started with to all three of those people and I think it's a really uh, important thing for the city of Ray and for the county as a whole. So any questions?
I move to approve ratification of the letter of support for the conveyance of Full Moon Dam and Crystal Resort.
Right, motion made in second, all favor? Thank you. Item number fifteen is ratification of a support letter for the city town enterprise zone redesignation. Again, uh, in my role as, uh, town representative of the city ten, uh, we were discussing the fact that the enterprise zones will be re-designated with the state, so they know what the enterprise zone thing is. We do have some very valuable local nonprofits to take advantage of this. Really cool thing about enterprise zone designations for nonprofits to get donations is that the donor gets a tax write-off, write-off of it's essentially that, uh, deduction from your taxes. Different than like a writing off for donations is probably uh, charitable contribution, charitable contribution.
Yeah, so it's a tax credit, it's not a tax deduction.
Twenty, twenty-five percent donation, if it's cash, and it's twelve and a half percent of its income. Um, but it's, it's really.
So it's like a donor advice center where you go to these people with your money and say, go loan nonprofit, you wanted it?
Say this here, no theater, who's an enterprise zone. Does it need, they just tell their, as they're fundraising, they just tell the potential owners they get private zone tax credit. If you donate tax, have twenty-five percent of cash and twenty-nine percent of income. It's just an additional benefit that.
On top of the normal.
And it's, it's tied to the actual enterprise zone designation of the state. Areas get designated as enterprise zones based on their, you know, statistics. And sometimes they come off of the enterprise zone goals because their, you know, statistics are reached a certain threshold. The state doesn't, doesn't look what's important or necessary, I should say.
The concert series is similar.
We, we have a number of really valuable community entities that could get that stuff. So, um, just want you to, uh, ratify.
I move to ratify the letter of support for the city town enterprise zone redesignation application. Second.
Motion made in second, all favor? And then we have the new item number sixteen, which is, uh, uh, certification, ratification of moving to, uh, stage two fire restrictions, I presume? Looking at the smokeless skies the last few days and, um, having hikes in the East Fork, Simone yesterday. It's crispy.
It's, yeah.
So I think this is a no brainer.
I moved to ratify, moved to stage two fire restrictions. Second.
Second.
Motion made in second, all favor? What was sixteen? Oh, it's got questions about whether we should.
Do we want to write a letter? I, it's, I mean, I'm happy to have more information and, or would it be a letter to support what they're already doing to make sure it stays a top priority because of the rate of crowds?
That's what I, because I don't feel like we should be saying we should do this, this or this.
Yeah.
On of research on one of the best.
I wouldn't go.
Question for Preston on this, because he's on the, uh, Lou Joanne are on the, uh, Dyson Valley Transportation, it's called GPTPR.
Yeah, transportation planning.
Um, and can you liken this to what relates to, I, I know that that section of highway has been on the list to be improved for quite a long time now, and I think I saw within the last six months or a year that it actually was up for like next year or so.
Um, I, I don't remember off the cuff. Joanne's on the call and she, she might remember better than I do, but the next GPTPR meeting is tomorrow afternoon. And they don't meet very often, so if you ask me this tomorrow evening, I'd know the answer.
I was, I was actually just looking at it at the beginning of the meeting when Polly brought this up. And it's actually, if you look at their list of projects, it's one that's in the design phase. Money has already been expended from the state.
Awesome.
I think it was financially, fiscal years twenty-three through twenty-six, there was like X number of dollars expended with money planned to be spent in twenty twenty-seven for construction.
That's awesome.
I, I think, yeah, that's.
It was, it was, I read the same thing, twenty-seven or twenty-eight.
Just like reiterating, just to.
How about we, direct Preston, sorry. How about if we, um, direct Preston at the meeting tomorrow to just pass along the Ridgeway Town Council's formal, uh,
Could start the rest to keep it.
To fast track that as much as possible, given spade fatalities and serious accidents.
And remind me, uh, I mean, Beth, we just talked.
The scope was widening and safety improvements, I believe. I can, I can find it again, Preston, but I think that was the. We'll, we'll see it. It really isn't. It was pretty obvious, which one?
Multiple passing lanes that you can pass in that zone exactly. And the road is this wide and it's sixty. And there are no shoulders. Right. So like, I mean, I've really done passive research on.
Is there any reason to consider other projects at the same time? I mean, I know this obviously gives the attention because of the town is there? Uh, and, and I don't know how C dot works or how I think it's towards. But, you know, there's other issues with five fifty-two that probably will serve to support the town. Like changes. Uh, and I don't know if we want to just rush off and support this one, or if we want to talk about lowering the speed limit in front of the city terrace where people are just trying to make a left-hand turn with no left turn lane and the tra, and the speed limit is sixty miles an hour. Just because a fatality is going to happen there, doesn't mean it's not dangerous. So I don't, I don't know how I can do this, though. So I'm not. Well, I, I can tell you for as long as I can evolve, nothing gets C dot's attention like a town.
Isn't that sad?
Yes, that's, that's their main thing.
Yeah, and strike all the arms hot, clearly. If, if we can make a change for the good, let's do it.
Also say that, that town of Ridgeway's representatives on GPR, um, are always advocating for various things. I mean, I've tried to get the, the up long about on.
Well, we, we made, we had a, last year in budget season, we actually, the data we got, like, it actually sounded like C dot. C dot moves very slowly. And actually, I took that report that Joanne gave us last. As like, it's being seen. And so I think John was right. The fact that we have Preston and Joanna sit on that board, and when you look at their list of priorities, is they're looking at a lot of things and, and they, that's what we have.
We've, we've developed a good relationship with C dot, so they do this to us.
Maybe we should send some gifts.
Um, the piece that you, or the same, you gave an example on lowering the speed limit, that's handled much differently and not through the GPTPR. Uh, C dot has their engineering and, you know, safety, traffic control teams that take requests and complaints and they, they do a pretty good job of being attentive and evaluating that based on the traffic data, but they, there's a lot of red tape and bureaucracy. Yeah, understandably with large organizations like that, but to my point, um, if it's something like that, lowering the speed limit or modifying it somehow, there's a, it's a different protocol for evaluating.
C dot, for, for example, C dot has always said, they set speed limits based on speed to traffic travels. For years, the speed limit was thirty-five, like through, all the way through town. And so they, actually, I remember there was a time where we got wind that they were going to put out those, those, um, speed sensor things. We told everybody to go out and drive twenty-five through, through there, and they finally did lower it. I don't know if us doing that hadn't played any role, but they, they've always claimed that they, the only way they set speed limits is based on the actual speed traffic scale.
Claire, I didn't mean to get twisted off on that. And I would just ask council, if there are other things, is this an opportunity to throw that up the ladder? That's all I'm saying.
At least create a project, I guess.
Yeah, your, your point is well taken. I would also like to see that this is just my own personal, not a council standpoint, my own personal opinion is that it should be twenty-five through there, drop down.
And that's, that's going to be, that's going to be a tough one.
But I don't think that's.
Uh, hi, yeah, I wanted to just share that the, last year, the county did file a formal uh, request with the C dot traffic engineer to do a traffic study on that section of highway around County Road twenty-four and Vista Terrace. And so that application should be in process, but it certainly wouldn't hurt, um, for the town to give them, um, maybe a sharp elbow reminder that it matters to the town as well. So that's in process, but, uh, it'd be great to, um, reinforce that with C dot.
Great, thanks. Okay, so, um, enough on that. I went to quick. Cover cut well enough, um.
This is mumbling.
Mumbling over there, yeah. Um, item, the original item number sixteen is table. That takes us to the updated schedule for preparation of the twenty-sixth fiscal year budget.
Yep, uh, budget, budget schedule, um, there's a conflict. I won't be in town October eighteenth, so I apologize. We need to try to find a different uh, date to hold the budget retreat.
But before that, we changed that council meeting in October to the first.
That's right. That's our hometown council meeting. The eighteenth is our budget retreat.
But I understand that, but this still says the eighth.
Which was right.
Yeah. Um, so what's the window of weekends we're looking at? Are we looking earlier? Are we looking later than the eighteenth?
Twenty-five, that could maybe do, eleventh is really hard, that's the middle of Ridgeway's school break. Well, then I'm also calling both playoffs and.
I'm out the twenty-fifth because that's your raise break.
That's what we originally talked about, yeah, because eleven is ridiculous.
This date so long ago, but there said one breaks on the eleventh, one's on.
Which is how we got the.
What about November first?
I can do November first.
Is that too late?
I can do November first.
Are you ready? I didn't even know what you're.
Yeah, I know. Um, I'm trying to think about your question about, is that too late? Yeah, it's, of course, because there's, there's so much that comes on in that meeting that has to go into that document that we would be the next week is the council meeting, right?
No, it's actually.
Yeah, but the, I'm drawn with the repeat group. The following week.
Do I need to rock, paper, scissors with Josie, who gets our break?
Is the.
Well, I'm not coming in that way. I'm not. It's my, still, it's still as valuable playoffs too, so.
Is the fourth an option? Or? Okay, so wait, Josie, are you saying you could do Sunday the twelfth? Is that why you're?
I absolutely don't want to, but, but, I mean.
Yeah, well, I'm just making sure we're getting all of us for.
Totally.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm out.
What are you done?
I threw the twenty-seventh.
So you're already planning that?
In fact, last night I saw this, that there was this change and Jake goes, it's okay, Terry will be. No, he's going to be there. I was speaking up for you.
Something exotic, that's where I'm going to be. You're going to pay for a cell to go with you?
And October fourth, that's too soon.
Why is the fourth?
Is, I mean, October, well, that would be before we even have this.
No, because the draft has been at our first. So draft has been introduced October first because our town council meeting moved.
Number first.
Then we did October fourth.
The draft is, is, we're just meeting state stock.
Yeah.
It doesn't have anything to do with your discretion.
Just, just the fourth, fourth, fourth.
Not really. I'm supposed to be in Boulder.
I mean, we.
It's possible.
It's November first. What was the problem? First is too much.
Hands where it's too late for getting. We could do the twelfth. We could do.
I was just gonna say, like.
Are you going the whole year, nineteenth weekend? Can we do the nineteenth?
Oh, no, sorry.
We should have planned on the school week.
You'll see, so some of those are.
Um, uh, what about a week, week day doesn't work because.
It's okay. Does October fourth not work for some reason?
So I was just gonna say, like, maybe, and without doing like a doodle, well, informally, who can do the fourth?
Everybody, but.
Everybody with Terry or Michelle, but you're the, okay.
You're going to be until over the fifth.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I need to be there on the sixth, and I was going to go on, or on the fifth is the day I need to be there, so I was going to drive up the day before. Okay. The fourth is a Saturday or a Sunday?
Saturday.
I can make that work.
It's when we're done by two, so that too, yeah. And then we actually have to be done by two, so we can send Michelle.
What's up?
Let's do the fourth.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
You'll send a calendar. What else? Nothing else on the schedule, the budget schedule?
No, sir, that was it.
Okay, so, uh, you know, highlight anything in the.
I do actually, uh, you know, to start, uh, someone brought up, I guess Michelle brought up Mountain Lodge and some rubblings about plans to modify what they do over there for workforce housing. That brought that to my attention, I think it was last week, right? Fundamentally, uh, and Angie's going to reach out to Mountain Lodge if she hasn't already, but that would constitute a change in use and require the town to evaluate impacts, would require some form of site plan application and approval from the town. So just, uh, in the way that Angie and I have kind of briefly talked about it. So just, there's a mechanism there for the town to understand all those impacts and, and changing even partially a use like that, uh, lodging establishment. So just want you to know that.
Because the article came, it was the, it was the West End of Montrose County complaining about how it was going to affect them, and then they weren't being consulted at all, and they were like, wait, this, this is a big impact.
So I, I forwarded Preston a data sheet from the Four Seasons with what they're proposing. And then a letter that came from all those West End communities that was signed. Um, and then there's also apparently, and I don't have details on it, but, um, Galena Leeson is the county commissioner up in Samuelville County that's been really involved in this. Yeah, it said that there was going to be some sort of meeting on September eleventh about the, um, impacts. And that was also in the email that I forwarded you, Preston, that I just got today. Um, and so what's that?
Can you bring that to me, please?
I, I'm just, I sent it to Preston in Hills, he can, he can be the info conduit there, just so we're not doing anything improper. Um, but yeah, so that's as bad as our impacts are, um, they're looking at doing some pretty significant things in the West End, like buying Rimrock Lodge in Naterita.
Well, and also it was like some kind of like structure, temporary.
Oh, there's like a man camp in, 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 uh, right now. So, um, but yes, thank you for taking the proactive way of using our code and sending Angie to, to work with Mountain Lodge on that. Because I just think about all those conversations we had about visitation and getting people to Ridgeway and taking Mountain Lodge out of circulation is devastating.
First thing, like I was in Tire Ride when they built the Doral and it, all those people came in to work there and it really affected the community. It was, it was a heavy impact, like bikes were disappearing, like I'm not saying that's what's going to happen, but it affected the community.
And that's, and that's what the letter from the West End was alleging, was this is additional impacts on EMS on.
Sewer water.
Water sewer, yeah. So anyways.
This isn't cool.
Yeah, um, so anyway, it, yeah, that's.
Also, is it? Well, and that's not a person to. Well, and that's not a thing there, like a person to live in a place with no kitchen.
That's the question, that's the question. That's our, that's our code question that Angie is gonna work with.
There's no kitchens. There are king rooms with a kitchen outside.
It's just crazy. That's, that's why they can't. So, thanks for the update on that.
So thanks for the email.
Yeah.
I won't beat everything in the report, there's uh, the Beaver Creek Conversion Project webpage has uh. Timeline and up to date information based on what's going on, Meridian is up there now, working on the road, I mentioned that earlier. Um, the ductile iron pipe replacement project is, is underway. Um, Ridgeway Valley's doing that. Water will be shut off. For the entirety of the town, the evening of Tuesday, August nineteenth, so that's this next Tuesday from ten. P M to about two A M, it's a four hour period, give or take, that Ridgeway Valley needs to. Um, charge up and put into service a temporary water. So, uh, we'll. Put a lot of um, communications out there, especially on very county alerts. In the days, uh.
Not to be too geeky, but when you, where are you shut down? Still, uh, grabbing things fresh in. Two, two of us poor people are very northern happy, so uh, we the. Uh, last one to receive is the first one.
Yeah, you'll.
You'll lose, you'll lose it first.
Lose it first, right?
And then be the last to get it back.
All the windows.
Yeah, the windows. Accompanied, I don't have to base. Most folks.
Well, potentially causing air bubbles in the line that we have to bleed out, that's mission.
Uh, Joanne can talk to that, I mean, I.
Really no more than usual, I'm just, your boss is full of spit.
But yes, August nineteenth, ten P M to to two A M, give or take. Um, maybe even three, but usually that's a highly conservative window, and it takes a couple hours, so that's all we're. The community grant program for twenty twenty six, the, the uh, application materials are available, so I know there's a lot of interested people out there. The banner structure project over sixty two of Cora Street, we did not receive any quotes in the month timeframe, that's what that out there. So I've contacted, uh. You know, a handful of local contractors to just, you know, try to, you know, get nudges and and see if there's interest in the projects, and there seems to be some momentum, and. Open to get some votes here in the next couple weeks, so hopefully by the next. September tenth town council meeting, uh, we have a quote, that's in the uh, budget ballpark, and get going on that, cuz that. You know, it's a. Little technical plan set that we got from Buck Corn, but it won't take that long to get it built, so. That's all I'll take there. Uh, you all got directly emailed me about. The lead action level exceeds notice uh, earlier in July, so I just wanna make note that it's not due to a system wide issue. Um, C P H has to have, you know, an action level. Or a threshold, right, for any of the bad stuff, lead in particular. Uh, that one, lead is fifteen uh, parts per billion, and our sampling that we did, and we do it every six months, I believe. Uh, came in at like fifteen point eight parts per billion. So that required a tier one notice, which is like the premier of the notices and uh, kind of the biggest appeals, but uh. In talking to the water quality control division. Uh, folks that were assigned to us and uh, were very helpful, they, they felt confident as well, based on the sampling results, that it wasn't a system wide issue. But we will need to be doing additional sampling uh, here coming up and some educational. Uh, outreach to all of our water customers as well, so just. Yeah, just kind of following up on that, it's not cool to get that notice, but um. Or to have to do that, but, you know, again, it's not a system wide issue, it does happen uh, occasionally, can largely be attributed to. Old service lines uh, or old plumbing fixtures within homes where. Whatever this can break off and actually come out into uh, the water.
So Preston, when we're doing those twenty sampling sites, some of them are coming from inside miscellaneous structures where it could be fixtures in homes?
Mine, yes.
Okay.
Mine is one.
Okay. I think that was, I was assuming when you had that note that you'd been there, but it wasn't.
I, I, I'm guessing my, my test this year was the tenth of our per billion goal. So instead of fifteen point eight, it was fifteen point one. Um, and it's probably got solder, it could be, you know, it could be, um, but it there, I, my, our house is. Originally from eighteen ninety one, it's been, wow, I mean, it's. It's the pipeline, some of it's gouty, some of it's, I don't, I don't think we actually have any lead pipe, but I'm guessing there's, there's old stuff and stuff like that.
Sweat joints on copper even. And then I don't wanna belabor it, but we have officially, town Ridgeway has officially been deemed a non-lead system. However, you know, we did a lot of work, the service line inventory and such. But there's a threshold, you know, there were a certain number of unknowns that were identified through that inventory, and we only had to identify a certain percentage of those unknowns. So I'm making it up, I wanna say we had like thirty nine unknowns that we needed to for sure identify. Uh, like seven or eight of those to meet the required requirements, and all of the eight that we identified were not lead, and so we're deemed on that. That doesn't mean that there may not be some lead, some lead service lines out there, so I just wanna make sure they're transparent about that, so.
Yeah.
The condemnation uh, proceeding. Uh, piece, I mean, everyone kind of knows now, I've kind of, you know, it's, it's out there in the newspaper, and you all have been receiving updates, but uh. The town has officially acquired the recreational trail easement at uh, five thirty nine. Marion Overlook, and we've gone just today rubbing, while we had it surveyed, to make sure we understand the exact uh. Scientific boundaries to work within, and Jeff Rivera was rubbing today, we'll lay meat fabric and uh. Um, so trail gravel during the next few days, that we're working with Susan Lacy and Shane Air at the school district to make sure they continue that path to. Uh, an appropriate place at the secondary school to even more, uh, or even better encourage folks to actually take that path.
They, they did their, they began their grubbing as well to join trail, so. I can't remember, I'm sorry, but um, is there, we have a plan to eventually have a fence on one side of the road?
Uh, we are not allowed to have a fence or any other vertical improvement on that, uh. On that.
It lands like a driveway across.
And we can impede uh, the property members' access onto.
Jeff, Jeff was up there today, this, Kristen said, and talked to him, he said that the actual trail alone would be six feet wide on the ten.
Well, we're just trying to, yeah, realistically, make sure we don't go beyond the.
So why?
Sounds good.
Uh, and then there's one more thing, uh, an open house for the athletic park, the uh, pickleball courts and the baseball courts are at like thirty percent. Uh, design stakeholder meetings with the pickleball club and the great, great guy baseball are scheduled for August twenty eighth, and then there is an open house. In the deck room on August twenty eighth, between six and eight P M, so Walker, uh, Walker and Stephanie with T H M. Design will be here to. Uh, leave that open house. And then, um, to show you, you asked me earlier, the effective governance uh, on the road workshop. Was originally scheduled for August twenty first in the deck room, I just got a note today that said signups weren't really that, right? So they're pushing it to November twenty.
Yeah, I, when I went on to the signup, just to get more information, there weren't.
There were no times.
Yeah, I was like, what, what's signed?
So I'll let them know that.
Maybe that's why they didn't get anybody to sign up.
Well, I'm glad you guys are looking at it, it's, it's a valuable thing to do.
I have one other random thing, I don't know where it fits, but um. Out by Samuelville Power along the River Trail, there's those wildlife signs, and they're all like bleached out, and you can't read them anymore, and they should probably just be taken down. Like, I think it described fish or birds or something, but they're.
Triple in signage?
Yeah, they're, the towns are good anymore.
So, we're into the signs that we did as part of the um, river restoration project. They're on that little barrier right by that trash can right by there.
Where the picnic tables are, and it gets swampy when the winter time?
They've been unreadable for.
Yeah.
I still talk about the eagles.
If we're not gonna replace them, we should take them down, cuz they look junky.
Well, we'll look at that, and then a huge shout out to, uh, we can talk, get Chip Marlowe's stuff, I'll have to. Chip Marlowe and Jack Petricelli wrote a huge thanks by everybody for all their uh, graffiti mediation on the Tressel Bridge.
Nice.
So.
But yeah, out by the Tressel Bridge, you're exactly right, Pam.
Looked like Chip was putting in a fence post for something today.
And Chip does what Chip does.
I've got one more thing. Uh, and thank Pam for making these chairs happen. And the tables, and I'll just straddle a table leg or sit on John's lap at the meeting. Thank you.
I don't know about that joke, Preston, who's responsible for that one?
Apparently, Preston.
I mean, it doesn't offend anybody, it's easy.
I thought it was funny.
Oh, God, Joe.
What's your joke, Bob?
Uh, did you guys hear about the butcher that backed up into the meat grinder?
Oh, no.
He got behind in his work.
There and tell these jokes is really something.
That's good, that's good, I like it. Um, I, I'm guessing we have a couple committee reports, maybe?
Uh, planning did not meet last month, we will be meeting next week, so I might have a report next month.
Right. Terry, you're giving a quick S A B, the L O I that town council approved was submitted. Were due here back by September thirty, seen with a full application, which will then be due by November fifth, and. Are successful with that, we should receive a worth by December fifteenth. Which will have to, uh, it will have to consider uh, the matching requirements in our budget cycle ahead of being notified, since this site will be over before that. So, so we can look at the, the three levels of funding, just kind of noodle that. Uh, we did uh, the S A B sponsor at the E V ride and drive event, I mentioned that. Which was successful, other than it just didn't receive much participation. But there was a lot of turnover. Because you mentioned you had to walk across the street, and was there at the rendezvous festival? I think it's cuz it's during, during.
I think we need, I, I, I don't know, like, the rendezvous is such like a thing to bring people out, the question is, like, one of the things I thought about. Was the fire department reserves those spots along here, could we reserve some parking? I know people wanna park close to the rendezvous, but people are coming down for that.
Another suggestions that, near the E V charters, which, you know. Or not all.
They, but they had, they had food there, so I was just trying to think of like, how could we? Leverage it instead of it being.
Any local interest saturated. We'll bring it up to the next S A B meetings. Uh, September fifth is gonna be the ribbon cutting for the microgrid at the decor room. We have multiple participants, the S A B is gonna sponsor it, Dola, the, uh, Julia Masters, the um, director from the. Microgrid for Community Resilience Program, it's actually gonna be ten, on Patrick Brown and Ellie. Um, the equation partners, the S M P A and Powell will be there with a new film to see. You know, be holding children type events and some refreshments, and um, to, rather than just cutting a ribbon, we're gonna flip the switch and go off grid. The events. Demonstrated the microgrid. Um, we're working on an uh, pile of. No idle of regulator ordinance that should be presented. Probably at the next meeting, a draft of that, as well as uh, uh, one of the um, members of the S A B will be. Be providing a formal presentation, a quarterly presentation in the next S A B meeting. There's been some, a new spot has opened up, and we've, um, we've shuffled the chairs, literally, so there'll be a new chair, so that's gonna rotate. Is it every year, we're gonna change chair? Uh, that's all I have. Bill, we're continuing to have good, active participation in meetings. Preston is, so, you know, monitors and organizes the meetings, and it's really helped a lot. So it's great, it's become. Anyone else? Okay. Is there anything else?
No.
Jane?
I do have a suggestion for the E V event.
Come on up.
Some signage would have been great, it was at, like, oh, there was nothing other than, um. Carl was there with his truck sitting. Doing the crosses, those people going in, but there was no other, other than Tri-State had their truck and their can, but. I mean, I think that might help that people would know.
We were gonna go one step further and actually reserve a rendezvous booth space, but it was too costly, and we'd have to manage both days, even. Events on Monday, so that kind of fell through the cracks.
One of the things that just occurred to me, and I maybe could volunteer and do this next year, is we need like a human sandwich board, we walk through. No, seriously, we're, I mean, you could, you could take shifts and. No, like, I think, make a giant big version of your poster, or like, test drive an E V, ask me how. And then a physical person who can say, yeah, just walk right over here, like, I.
Well, and some stick in the ground signs that don't necessarily have a date on, so you could use them here after you're at.
I think that, that's just, department's vehicles should be involved too.
Yeah, thank you for having him.
Does it just five down?
People, but, but the few people that were there. Um, but that, that was what I'm thinking that I saw, was some kind of signage that we used to let nobody know, cuz it's. And it could have been simple, and maybe we could have put in some in the park so people would know.
Oh, right.
Thanks for saying that.
Yeah, it's such a cool event, like, we, we test drove Dana's car, and she was so excited to tell us what she liked about it, and it was like. It was like, it was a really good. Oh, God, she was, just right about a little bit of dog hair, and I was like, hey, I'm actually interested in your opinion on how the dog fits in here, please tell me.
Well, I know Tesla's not pop so popular anymore, but during Film Fest up in Tire Ride, they came and brought a bunch of cars, and it's really cool. Like, you could drive them.
All great suggestions, but I missed the event myself.
Thanks, Shane.
Thanks, Shane.
Appreciate it, thanks, Shane. I was in the park all weekend and completely forgot that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not going.
All right, well.
Picture's out.
Good night, all.